Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We're ready to begin. This Planning Commission meeting is called to order. Tonight's meeting has been properly noticed and posted in compliance with the open-meeting law. These proceedings are being video-recorded as well as presented live on KCLV, Cable Channel 2, and are closed-caption for our hearing-impaired viewers. Please note, customers of CenturyLink can view this program in high-definition on Channel 1002. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Madam Clerk, will you please call roll?
Chair Moody.
Here.
Vice Chair Slottman.
Present.
Commissioner Quinn.
Here.
Commissioner Flengus. Excuse me, Commissioner Frogbridge.
Here.
Commissioner Creer.
Here.
Commissioner Cherry.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. We do expect Commissioner Flengus later in today's meeting. Ladies and gentlemen, I call your attention to the information printed in your agenda concerning our actions and the appeal and review process, if appropriate. Please read this carefully, and if you have any questions, staff is available. Also, the second page of the agenda contains our rules of conduct, and we appreciate your adhering to these rules so we can have a smooth meeting. Thank you. Moving on to Item 4. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters on the agenda for action. If you wish to be heard, come to the podium and give your name for the record. The amount of discussion, as well as the amount of any time any single speaker is allowed, may be limited. All comments made under this item for specific action items will be cross-referenced to those items. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak under this portion of the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to...oh, we do. Sorry, I thought you'd just come up for an agenda.
Oh, no, both. Cross-referencing Item 37. Is that going to be heard today because I had the word "abeyance" in front? I wasn't sure if it's been obeyed from last time or if that was today.
It will be heard tonight. It was obeyed before tonight.
That's what I thought. If I could just make public comment, and then I'll specifically...general comment, and then I'll specifically address this one when the agenda item is called.
Okay.
Thank you. My name is David Figler. I live at 1302 South Sixth Street. I am the president of the historic John S. Park neighborhood, and I come in that capacity. I understand the Planning Commission today will be discussing a matter concerning a short-term rental. The general comment that I wanted to make with regard to the short-term rentals, in neighborhoods such as our own, these short-term rentals have become a new issue. There is much discussion in our neighborhood meetings, and John S. Park neighborhood meeting typically has 40 to 50 residents that come each time. The main concern is that we don't know when they're coming in and where they're going, per se. I understand there's distance requirements, and that's why we're on agenda today, and we'll talk about that when that comes up. But I was wondering, and I guess I could direct this question to Director Perrigo, if there would be a possibility of revealing to the neighborhoods or putting up on the city's website, a list of the licensed short-term rentals? The concern is that there are a number of houses that operate as either party houses or unofficial short-term rentals. There are concerns, there's no way to report it, et cetera, per se. Code enforcement is overwhelmed oftentimes, and with the timing of us noticing that these houses are operating in a manner consistent with the short-term rental. We don't know if they're licensed or not. So, reference like that would be very helpful for us to know where to direct our particular concerns. The reason that we ask for that is because there are a number of requirements of short-term rentals, as the Planning Commission knows, that would require a great deal of compliance, and they happen lightning-fast. So, Friday night, there's a big gathering, a wedding or a banquet or something that would be happening that would be disallowed under the code. There are trash provisions, there are parking provisions, there's a whole laundry list of things. So, the concern is that there's not enough enforcement to deal with them. They are changing the character already of our various neighborhoods, but that we're not really sure who is and who isn't properly licensed, and if there's any problems. So, that would be my portion of the public comment when it comes to the short-term rentals, just to know that is a vast concern to our...especially our historic neighborhoods. And with each individual one, there's going to be concerns as far as their proliferation of them. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Mrs. Dodson's been working on this, and she can provide that information.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, with your permission, for the record, Karen Dodson, Deputy Director. The City of Las Vegas website, under Las Vegas Business Licensing, does have a complete list of every short-term rental. I'd be happy to hand this gentleman my card. You can also set up the query on there to give you every new short-term rental that is licensed or by date, a variety of things. But they are all available on the website. We're also working on changes to the short-term rental ordinance, and happy to provide that information as well.
Thank you. Good evening.
Mr. Chairman, if I can add, there's also an interactive map, which you can zoom into certain areas and see where the licensed short-term rentals are currently.
Great. Okay. Good evening.
Hi. My name's Ted Papa George, and I'm here talking, I think it's about Item Number 60. So, it may be considered a short-term rental, but it's an approval, a license for a bed and breakfast.
We will call that...will you be around when we call that item on tonight's agenda?
Okay. Sorry about that. I thought you were calling for all items or just the initial item. It's my first time, sorry.
No, no problem. No problem at all. Yeah, that will be heard just in the ord...in the order that it's on tonight's agenda. So, we'll see you here.
Right, thank you.
Hour and a half, two hours, is my guess.
We'll come back.
All right. Okay. Seeing no other comments, we're now to Item 5. This is for possible action to approve the final minutes for the October 11, October 18, and November 1, 2016 Planning Commission meetings. And we're going to take, I would prefer, a motion individually for each of those minutes, please.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to approve the October 11, 2016 Planning Commission minutes.
Thanks, Commissioner Slottman. Please vote.
And on the next item, I would move to approve the October 18, 2016 Planning Commission minutes.
Thank you, please vote. Thank you. A motion also carries. Those minutes are approved.
And, Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve the November 1, 2016 Planning Commission meet...minutes.
Please vote.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I'll be abstaining from this vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
I wasn't here. Thank you.
A motion also carries. Moving on to our housekeeping items. Are there any items that commissioners, staff, applicants, or members of the public would like to pull forward for action?
Mr. Chairman, Items 17 and 18, WVR 67425 and TMP 67366. The applicant has requested that these items be held in abeyance to the January 10, 2017 Planning Commission meeting. Items 29 through 33, VAR 664436, SUP 66444, SUP 66445, SUP 66446, and SDR 66447. The applicant is requesting abeyance to the January 10, 2017 Planning Commission meeting. This happens to be the third abeyance request, and the Planning Commission will have to make a finding cause. Item 28, the applicant has requested abeyance to the February 14, 2017 Planning Commission meeting. That is SDR 66170. And Item Number 44, VAR 67735. The applicant has requested this item be withdrawn without prejudice. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I have the applicant on Items 29 through 33? Please come to the microphone.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Planning Commissioners. My name is Tony Celeste, Address 1980 Festival Plaza Drive, here on behalf of the applicant. This is our third request. The reason for it is that, most recently, before the City Council, was a small triangular piece adjacent to our two parcels that was recently annexed into the city. Based on that annexation, we're coming in to slightly redesign our site plan to incorporate that parcel that was annexed, and therefore, that is the reason for our request of abeyance, so that we could package it all together and be in front of you 30 days with one clean plan.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Does anyone wish to speak on any of these items? Whether they should stand or this housekeeping items or be heard as scheduled tonight? Come on up.
Good evening. My name is Adam Shepherd. I live at 6797 Bristol Falls Street. I wanted to discuss Items 29 through 33 on the agenda. First off, in regards to...
Well, hang on for a minute. So, are you here asking that it not be obeyed?
Yes.
Okay.
I actually have reasons for this. Specifically, the meeting on 9/7/16, where parcel number 12519301001 was changed from Plan Development to C1. The owners of the lots basically said that they wanted to combine the two adjacent...or the two lots behind it to the east, which is 12519301002 and 003, with that lot for one planned commercial development. During that meeting, they had set a tentative map for the whole 14.27 acres. The map that they had provided is only 9.27 acres. They have conveniently left that last five acres out that's next to the development. Part of this issue comes to, they want to put a bar and a tavern there, which is already 339 feet, proposed from Centennial High School, which is a high walkway for the traffic kids. That is their only...hundreds of students, that is their only way home, right in front of that, where that tavern would be. I believe that that's a danger in and of itself, but to this point, if they added that third lot in, like they said they were going to, they would have been 1,500 feet within another school, and there would have been no waiver allowance for that school at all.
Okay. I'm still not sure I've heard you say why you're...
Because I believe that they need to include that third lot, like they said they were intending to, to begin with. We, as the residents, need to know what is going to be put there, because if they're allowed to put, as it stands, the 9.27 acres, we're not knowing what they're going to put in between there, and it's going to be very limited as to what they could put there. And I think aesthetically, as well as to...as far as how the neighborhood should look, and its effect on the residential area that would be adjacent to it, that they need to provide a whole plan, like they said they were going to in the first place.
All right. So, Mr. Celeste, I guess I'd like to hear a brief response, so we can consider whether we want to put this on part of our public hearing items or keep it on the housekeeping items.
Sure, I appreciate the opportunity. And at first, I'm more than happy to meet with this gentleman, should the Planning Commission request our...approve our request for abeyance for 30 days, and specifically meet with him and any other neighbors. But more specifically, those parcels that this gentleman is referring to are actually under different ownership. My client does not control those. What we have shown is the full plan, generally speaking, with the exception of that small sliver, that the annexation piece that I referred to earlier, which is why we're...have asked for this abeyance, so we can include that, and just, you know, be more than happy to meet with him in the meantime to discuss the entire...the entire site plan, which does include a grocery...grocery store, as well as tavern and some other uses that we're proposing.
Okay, very good.
I would be willing to meet with them to discuss what exactly their plan is, and, you know, because I'm kind of curious, if they...if they only own half the lots there, how they've got a two-lot plan and not own...
And those are something to speak with the applicant about, but with the understanding that these are different owners, do you now have any disagreement with a request to obey for 30 days?
As long as I can discuss with them and see exactly what the intentional plan is to go along with that.
I'll get his contact information.
Very good. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak on any of these items? Seeing and hearing none, Commissioner Slottman, your motion on the housekeeping items.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, on Items 17 and 18, I would move to hold these items in abeyance until the January 10, 2017 Planning Commission meeting, and hold Item 28, SDR 66170, until the February 14, 2017 Planning Commission meeting, and on Items 29, 30, 31, 32, and 33, to hold these items in abeyance until the January 10, 2017 Planning Commission meeting, with a justification due to the additional application due to the vacation and the added parcel. And then, on Item Number 44, to withdraw that application without prejudice.
Okay. Very good. Thank you for the motion. Please vote.
Thank you.
A motion carries. Okay, moving on to the consent items. Consent items are considered routine by the Planning Commission and may be enacted upon by one motion. However, any item may be discussed if a commissioner member or applicant so desires. Are there any commissioners or any members of the public that wish to discuss Items 7 through 11? Seeing and hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, on...I'll go ahead. I'll be abstaining on Item Number 11, as I have an ongoing relation...business relationship with the applicant on that particular project, but I'd move to approve the consent...agenda items, Number 7 through 11.
Thank you. Motion is made. Please vote. Consent Items 7 through 11 are approved.
Mr. Chairman, Items 7 and 8 are final action unless appealed to the City Clerk's Office within 10 days. Items 9, 10, and 11 are final action unless appealed to the City Clerk's Office within seven days.
One motion, one vote. The following are items that may be considered in one motion, one vote. They are considered routine, non-public, and public hearing items. All public hearings and non-public hearings will be opened at one time. Any person representing an application or a member of the public or a member of the Planning Commission not in agreement with the conditions and all standard conditions for the application recommended by staff should request to have that item removed from this part of the agenda. Beginning with related items 12 through 14. Item 12, all of these are...have been obeyed from a prior meeting. Item 12 is VAR 66138. The applicant is Faith Temple, and the owner is Kajak Faith, Temple True Holiness at Al. For possible action on a request for a variance to allow a four-foot side yard setback where five feet is required at 903 and 907 West Adams Avenue and 906 West Washington Avenue in Ward 5. Staff recommends approval. Item 13, SUP 66140, for possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed 2,408-square-foot church, house of worship in Ward 5. Staff recommends approval. And Item 14, SDR 66141, for possible action on a request for a site development plan review for a proposed 1,073-square-foot addition to an existing 1,335-square-foot church, house of worship, with waivers to allow a zero-foot-wide landscape buffer along the south property line and a 10-foot-wide landscape buffer along a portion of the north property line where 15 feet is required, and to allow zero-foot-wide landscaping buffers on portions of the west and east property line where eight feet is required in Ward 5. Staff recommends approval. Item 15, ZON 67385. The applicant is Sunrise Children's Foundation, and the owner is Church Trinity Life Center. For possible action on a request for a rezoning from R1, Single Family Residential, and C1, Limited Commercial, to CV, Civic, at 950 and 1,000 East St. Louis Avenue in Ward 3. Staff recommends approval. Item 16, VAR 67490. The applicant is Thunderbird Hotel. The owner is 1215 South Las Vegas Boulevard LLC. For possible action on a request for a variance to allow a 76-square-foot projecting sign where 32 square feet is the maximum allowed, and to allow the sign to be four foot...four feet above the rafter line where one foot is the maximum allowed at 1215 South Las Vegas in Ward 3. Staff recommends approval. Item 17 and 18 are related. Item 17 is WVR 67425. The applicant is...I'm sorry, these have been held. 19, SUP 67403. The applicant is Trader Joe's Company. The owner is KRG Las Vegas Centennial Gateway LLC. For possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed retail establishment with accessory packaged liquor, off-sale use within a proposed 14,000-square-foot general retail store at 5639 Centennial Center Boulevard in Ward 6. Staff recommends approval. Item 20, SUP 67440. The applicant owner is Elcorn Wallopie LLC. For possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed automobile maintenance use, auto smog check at 7165 North Wallopie Way in Ward 6. Staff recommends approval. Item 21, SUP 67458. The applicant owner is Joseph and Jody Garcia. For possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed accessory structure, Class 1 casita use at 5921 Huff Mountain Avenue in Ward 6. Staff recommends approval. Item 22, SUP 67488. The applicant owner is Lucky Dragon LP. For possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed accessory structure, Class 1 casita use at 5921 Huff Mountain Avenue in Ward 6. Staff recommends approval. Item 22, SUP 67488. The applicant owner is Lucky Dragon LP. For possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed 4,200-square-foot massage establishment within a gaming establishment, non-restricted with a waiver to allow a zero-foot distance separation from a residentially-zoned parcel, or 400 feet is the minimum distance required, at 300 West Sahara Avenue in Ward 3. Staff recommends approval. Item 23, SUP 67546. The applicant owner is Roberta Lynn Minogue Living Trust. For possible action on a request for a special use permit for an accessory structure, Class 1 casita use, at 4107 Del Monte Avenue in Ward 1. Staff recommends approval. Item 24, SDR 67388. The applicant owner is Cusrow Rouhani Family Trust. For possible action on a request for a major amendment to a previously approved site development plan review, SDR 41886, for a proposed 15,000-square-foot commercial recreation amusement indoor facility and a 4,800-square-foot restaurant on the west side of Rock Springs Drive, south of Lake Mead Boulevard in Ward 1. Staff recommends approval. Item 25, VAC 67371. The applicant owner is Pre Rancho Jones LLC. For possible action on a request for a petition to vacate a portion of Alexander Road, east of Rancho Drive, in Ward 5. Staff recommends approval. Item 26, VAC 67410. The applicant owner is Ta Las Vegas 4760 EBR LLC. For possible action on a request for a petition to vacate the public drainage unit on the northeast corner of Bonanza Road and Marion Drive, in Ward 3. Staff recommends approval. And finally, Item 27, VAC 67457. The applicant owner is the City of Las Vegas. For possible action on a request for a petition to vacate portions of Commerce Street, Wyoming Avenue, and Main Street, adjacent to Block 6 of Boulder Addition, in Ward 3. Staff recommends approval. Someone did approach the microphone while I was reading these in to the record. Does someone wish to be heard on one of these items?
Hello.
Hello.
My name is Charlotte Richards. I'm the owner of the Little White Wedding Chapel here in Las Vegas.
Can you tell us your address, please?
I live at 2,700 Las Vegas Boulevard, but my place of business is at 1301 Las Vegas Boulevard.
And which item are you speaking on?
Number 16.
Okay.
First of all, the persons that have taken over the Thunderbird have requested a sign that is very, very large, and I have...I was objected to have a sign of that size. I just was wondering why there would be a sign approval for this gentleman. Not only that...
Are you here to oppose that item?
Yes. I've been in Las Vegas for 60 years, and I've been in the wedding industry all this time, and I've done my very, very best to do the right thing about people coming to Las Vegas to be married. And I thank you for understanding about somebody coming in and putting a wedding chapel right next to mine. I mean, you can walk out of my door into his door, which is fine. I have no objections to that, but I do have objections to this large sign that is he's trying to put out.
Okay. Then what we're going to do, we're going to pull Item 16 from the one motion, one vote of the agenda, so that we can hear from the applicant and anyone else who wishes to speak either for or against this tonight.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard? Seeing none, close the public comment. Any discussion on the Planning Commission on any of these items, other than Item 16? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to pull Number 15 as well, so my motion would be to move to approve Items 12 through 14 and 19 through 27, with pulling 15 and 16 to public hearing.
Okay. Motion is to approve Items 12 through 14 and 19 through 27. Those items are approved.
Mr. Chairman, Items 12, 13, 14, 19, 20, 21, 22, 23, 24, and 26 are all final action unless appealed to the City Clerk's Office within 10 days. Items 25 and 27 will be heard at the City Council meeting on January 18, 2017.
Okay, very good. We are now to the public hearing items on tonight's agenda, and we have pulled forward Items 15 and 16. Before we get to those that we will begin with, I want to start with Item 63 under Director's Business. This is DIR 67582. The applicant owner is the City of Las Vegas. For discussion and possible action on a presentation of the Rainbow Boulevard North Corridor Plan in Wards 4 and 6. And staff does recommend approval on this.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Planning Commission. My name is Michael Howe. I'm a senior planner with the City of Las Vegas Planning Department, Long Range Division. With your permission, I'd like to make a brief presentation on the Rainbow North Corridor Plan for discussion and possible action. Real quickly, a brief introduction of where we're at. Just within the last year, we've seen some development...
Can I just interrupt you for a moment? Ma'am, in the back...are you le...are you guys leaving? We hope you'll stick around. Your item will be up, right? It'll be on the first part of tonight's agenda, and we pulled it forward, so we...we pulled it off the one motion, one vote portion of the calendar, so we could hear from you. Thank you.
It'll be a brief five minutes.
No, no problem. Go ahead.
So, real quickly, we're looking at the Rainbow Boulevard North Corridor from Rancho at the south end to 215. The reason we're looking at it, we did a study back in spring to look at the surge of development activity where some of the rural residential properties were going to commercial land use changes. With that, we're hearing from the neighbors some concern of what was the future for the corridor? What direction is it going? And so, that gave us that first opportunity to meet with the neighbors, to perhaps sit down, put together a plan, a vision, to have that question answered. Real quickly, where we're at right now, that first neighborhood meeting, we held that back in April. That was the first snapshot where we took our early study findings, and we introduced a survey to get the neighbors all to meet on page with where we're starting with, what a corridor plan could do, what some of the concerns are. a corridor plan could do, what some of the concerns are, in outlining what we're looking at gaining with the plan. From that initial meeting, there was a lot of good input, a lot of concerned neighbors that appreciated that the city was making the effort to put together a plan. And it was made very clear at that moment that we weren't going to propose any land use changes, any zoning changes. It was really giving them the opportunity to give us the feedback, the input of what their vision, what do they want to see on Rainbow? How do they want that future of Rainbow working? The significance is, it's, there are pockets of rural neighborhood preservation lots, and for the most part, it's a lot of single-family detached neighborhoods, but overall, it's a fairly quiet neighborhood, so there's concern of what that increase in traffic and activity with the commercial land use changes would be. The second neighborhood meeting was where we went over the survey, some of the initial findings, so that we could see that we're on the right track, and that was in July. And then we had our third neighborhood meeting recently, just December second. Excellent turnout. I had counted about forty citizens that, for the most part, stayed out for the three hours of that neighborhood meeting. We sat down, we went over bit by bit, piece by piece of the plan to make sure that we're getting an accurate feedback, that it was always clear that the neighbors are driving the plan, it's not the planning department putting together their direction. And then last week, we took that draft of the plan and that latest status of where we're at to city council to give them the update, and then here we are tonight to review, hopefully, the next step of this plan. So real quickly, starting with what we found the initial issue in the study is that Rainbow Boulevard, as you can see in the upper left-hand corner, it's classified as a primary arterial. And with that classification comes assumptions of how much carrying capacity, how much traffic occurs on it. A lot of the assumptions that it carries an amount of activity that may not be fully true. If you look at the diagram below, that's what an actual primary arterial street is per our current code. What our initial findings were is that because the Rainbow Boulevard terminates at the two fifteen with no anticipation ever of crossing the two fifteen, because it makes that entry at Rancho, it doesn't carry that much traffic, and we don't believe that any time in the future it'll carry that much more. To put in comparison, Ann Road, which is also a primary arterial, carries approximately twenty-five thousand vehicles per day, east-west, whereas Rainbow, north-south, is only carrying about fifty-seven hundred cars per day, and the bulk of that is thirty-two hundred cars heading north to the elementary school. So really, the bulk of that traffic that's being carried on Rainbow doesn't demonstrate that it's at the full capacity of a primary arterial, which is important because that was one of the key justifications for those commercial land use changes that were occurring at the intersection of Ann and Rainbow. What that means is, it wasn't so much off-point, but when we go through what those recent land use entitlements, we still haven't seen that those entitlements move into development. They tend to be more auto-focused, commercial that's looking for high traffic. That's where we have the drive-throughs, service stations, car washes, activities like that. And then further south, we have the CarMax, we have an auto dealership. So the neighbors are cognizant that there is going to be commercial land use changes. They're just trying to figure out what are the tolerable changes that they can live with. And within that survey, that was one of the key findings is, the first thing starting with is the general nature of the neighborhood. Do you feel that the rural character of the neighborhood is being maintained? And overwhelmingly, seventy-three percent said no, out of that concern for not just the recent land use changes, but kind of anticipating, well, what's going to come next? If we get a car wash, a drive-through, if we don't have a plan in place, what's there to expect? So then, leading next within the survey, what do you value most about your neighborhood? And one of the key things is rural area with single-family residences on large, medium lots. And then a key one is quiet, minimal noise. And so we're not looking at upsetting that, we're actually looking at that as the true benefit and strength of the corridor, and we can use that in putting that into the plan, that that's the market, that's the service that those future commercial uses will provide. And so that leads us into the next question. You know, given the recent approvals for a car wash, gas station, restaurant with drive-through at the intersection of Ann and Rainbow, what types of additional commercial uses, if any, would you like to see located at this intersection? And some of the key ones, we have professional offices and office conversions. Those seem like a quick, easy solution where you have an existing residential property that wants to go to that commercial change. At the meetings, we expressed that is a viable option, but there's some difficulties there. You tend to be limited with a small footprint that's hard to lease. Operating these PEO professional office conversions aren't really the ideal walkable, small-town character commercial we're looking for, so we can leave that in the palette. But some of the next items that they're looking at supporting salon barber shops, daycare preschools, and the key things that we're happy to find were restaurants, no drive-through, where we're expressing, you know, possible diners, breakfast shops, the restaurants that serve, again, those local neighborhoods within a walking distance. And then also a key item, small grocery. A lot of the residents, there are larger grocery stores within driving distance, but they'd like to see small markets within the corridor, which, again, is something that's quite feasible to do with the future plan. In conjunction with the land use changes, there's also the character and nature of Rainbow Boulevard itself as a roadway. And so one of the major concerns is, north of Ann, the posted speed limit's twenty-five miles per hour, and south of Ann, it gets up to forty-five. And that's a pretty big disjunction that does create not only a perception, but a safety risk. Any pedestrian strike after forty-five miles per hour, seventy percent tends to be fatal. So forty-five is a dangerous speed, really for short section of the corridor, which is creating some of the perceived and real safety hindrances that we could easily resolve. That's just changing the speed limit, and then also possible scenarios with speed cushions and roadway improvements. So real quick, the top three amenities you'd like to see along Rainbow Boulevard from Rancho to Ann, the two key items were bicycle lanes with reduced speed limit and a wide strip of landscaping between the sidewalk and street curbs, shrub, trees, et cetera. Going back into the corridor commercial trends, one of the things we were working with the neighbors were to get to the likes and dislikes, the differences and the challenges. So we looked around Rainbow itself to see some of the challenge. You have rural residential, the service commercial development at major intersections. Where at Ann and Rainbow, we have the Walgreens. Rural residential is common along Rainbow, north and south of Ann. We also have pockets of unincorporated Clark County. Those citizens were involved. That's a component of the plan that we're trying to address so that we maintain a good partnership with the county to understand what those, if there is a change in land use in the county, that we know what those are to anticipate if, in the future, they're annexed, what we're getting. And then last, we had service commercial, general retail, and single-family residential at Rainbow and Rancho. One of the challenges we had at the south end at Rancho, we have a C-two commercial property that would possibly benefit this plan with an increase of walkability and a minor aesthetic change, so that that nature of the property could face Rainbow itself. Basically, you have a stripped commercial center that backs Rainbow, and it's losing that opportunity to access all those neighbors and provide those services. Nearby commercial trends, and I think this is the stuff that the neighbors are most clear on, what they're afraid of. Service commercial development, auto-oriented development, less walkable with larger signage. These are the items, the typical drive-throughs, the things that the larger-capacity roads can handle, the larger shopping centers that with it come the higher traffic and change in intensity and noise. So then we went over to Town Center, which is in the adjacent area, to begin focusing on one of the key strategies, and that's you can have commercial development at major street corners, but what you really want is increase the walkability and connectivity, and that comes from scaling the signage, the commercial appearance down to the pedestrian level, providing amenities like street trees, sidewalks, bike lanes, and that helps establish the character of the corridor that will then, as a plan, help guide future development. So as commercial developers come in, they have a good anticipation of what the community's looking for. And also within that, there are some areas within the corridor that do have medium density to medium-low attached land use. And again, since we're not proposing any changes to land use, we want to focus on the fact that it's not the issue with the increased density, it's the design and the expectation of what you're getting. So you can do duplex, you can do stacked access, side-by-side, and keep it in the context and nature of the single-family neighborhood, so that they're not losing that quiet nature of what they have, but at the same time, they're going to have the ability to accommodate duplexes so long as we're clear with what type of design that we're supporting. Again, to stay within the nature and scale and context of the neighborhood. That also works with townhomes. Again, the design can really make the difference because one of the key issues that we have that we're finding with this plan is that land use changes, C-one, R-three, you see one in particular, limited commercial doesn't look like anything. If they say C-one, and they don't have a clear expectation of what that means in the future, then that's where the challenge comes from and the reluctance to have that support. C-one could, again, mean, you know, another future service station, or C-one could mean that ideal breakfast diner. And so within this plan, at least we can start calling out more fine-grained suggested uses, the things that would be supported, so that it's called out in the plan. And that gives us the ability, whenever we have a developer coming in at the pre-application conference, to give them the input. You know, the neighbors came together, we wrote it down, we have a plan, to give you guidance of what's going to be supported. And then, coming back to the street itself, the corridor, it's nothing but improvements could be made. The current status for Rainbow Boulevard, it's pretty much a blank slate, which gives us the opportunity of working with the neighbors. They're quite interested in expressing what we call the tactical urbanism, but the ability to test-drive some of these improvements. We have temporary speed cushions, the type of speed bumps you bolt down, and then even just some temporary lane marking, planter activities, bringing people out so that they can see what the impact of just having a little bit of landscaping in the street right away, reducing the lanes, what biking from your house to a local business feels like, so that they begin to establish the key component that protects the corridor, and that's the aesthetic and character of that community, that it's small-town Americana, nostalgic. You know, they'll support infill development, they'll support commercial development, but it has to serve the local community, it has to serve all those neighborhoods. And so with that, entertain any questions that you may have?
Okay. Before we get into questions from the commission, this has been noticed for a public hearing, and I want to open this for a public hearing, so any members of the public who wish to speak on this item, please come to the microphone, state your name and address, and let us know what you think.
Chairman, Commissioners, George Garcia, ten fifty-five Whitney Ranch Drive, Suite Two Ten. Pleasure to be before you, and I thank staffs to be commended for coming up and working and engaging the neighborhood on trying to come up with a plan for the area. So I think it's Mike's, from everything I've heard, has made tremendous efforts, particularly in the most recent neighborhood meeting with about forty people present. I think got a lot of good dialogue and communication going. So I want to kind of expand, clarify, and amplify on what staff, I think, has undertaken here. First off, as you know, we've done some of these projects that staff was referring to for the commercial on the arterials. And what we do know is that while this was a rural preservation area and rural and development in many instances, that's no longer the case. If you look at the actual an aerial of it, you'll see there's R-eight, there's higher-density single-family subdivisions. The rural, while there's still some remnants of it, it's largely gone. In fact, in the city's code, Rainbow Corridor, because it is an arterial, clearly allows for and identify that it's no longer, while it's technically in the R and P overlay, it really probably needs to be updated because the R and P overlay doesn't apply in that area because you have the arterial impact of the roadways, so they're eligible for an appropriate for higher-intensity uses. And in fact, some of the property owners out there paid for in an SID for some of those improvements, so they're wondering how this is going to affect what they were paid for and how it's going to affect them, not necessarily that it's bad, but just curious. I would point out, the reason the traffic on Rainbow is not yet increased, as staff pointed out, is because that commercial, neither the CarMax nor the other projects are yet completed and operating, so that traffic flow on Rainbow is still yet to come. The project on the northeast corner, that house has been demolished, and that project is underway. So we'll begin to see some of the traffic impacts from that commercial development as those projects come on board. So I think, you know, we need to look at it. I think I would agree with staff that the collector probably is the appropriate approach. It probably won't reach full arterial traffic capacities that we see on Ann, so some probably reduction, make it more walkable, I think, is probably a good idea. But I don't think it's ever going to be rural, nor is it today. So how do you do that? I think, as staff has indicated, perhaps the Americana or Main Street approach kind of thing, where you have, this takes on some of the characteristics of a Main Street, where it has some higher-density residential staff, some of the commercial uses, but again, not automobile-oriented. So that, what staff says fine-grain, I know what that language means, that basically means you kind of get some more detail about the type of development that would occur there, what would it look like? So what would that commercial begin to look like, and how would it affect the surrounding neighborhood in terms of the size and scale of that and the landscaping and the parking? So we have a project coming. I think they're coming forward that will begin to illustrate, we would agree with staff, that it probably needs to be smaller-scale commercial, not the pictures that's shown, shopping center style. It can front the street, it can be made more walkable, it can have design characteristics that's fit with the neighborhood, and can be supportive. So that could be, you want a barber's or hair salon, nails, you want legal offices, insurance, but you may want the restaurants, you may want a grocery store, not the large eighty thousand square foots that we see in the shopping centers, but a much smaller, neighborhood-friendly, walkable. And if you look on the northwest corner behind the convenience store, there's actually a path that leads directly out to Rainbow to make that a more walkable area. So we think there's a lot here, but we'd like to get into, I guess, with staff, a greater dialogue for the residents and properties that I represent on both north and south sides of Ann Road, how this would be implemented and translated into what that might begin to look like. So taking that fine-grain, basically adding some detail on what the commercial might begin to look like and how it begin to work and integrate into this neighborhood, the sort of Americana Main Street version that would fit probably well with what that transition is from something more than rural, which, and maybe, and something, you know, small-townish, but still fit into the suburban context. And that's, I think, what we've heard from the neighbors. Just to give you an example, and it's amplifying what staff found in its fifteen-person in the neighborhood survey, we have over a hundred and twenty people, we got three more emails today, in support of this kind of commercial development, and I'll be talking to you more about it on our future application. So we have about a hundred and twenty-five to a hundred and thirty in support of this sort of approach. So I'll be bringing that specifically on an application when we come back, but I wanted to share that with you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, please.
Stephen Farr, I live at fifty-four thirty-five North Rainbow. Our block between Hammer and Ann Road, there's only two residential properties there where there's houses. To my north, there's an empty lot who would like to become C-one because his neighbor to the north of him is C-one, and the corner lot is C-one. So it's coming down towards us. To the south of me, there's just the one house, and then there's a big empty corner lot at Hammer, which would really work well for C-one. What I don't understand is, the pictures that I'm seeing are showing something that I don't see there at all. When I look on the west side of Rainbow, all I see is a block wall that runs all the way from Ann to Hammer. So as far as walkability, I'm just not seeing it. Plus, as the previous gentleman mentioned, my one-acre property there on Rainbow was assessed thirty-two thousand dollars when the street was widened. So if the street is made narrow, does that mean we get a refund? Or do we get charged again to make it narrow? I think the way that block is going with the C-ones is fine. I'm trying to get mine rezoned right now because I'd like to take advantage of the opportunity that my neighbors have received. Plus, now with them having C-one, it diminishes my property's value as residential because people don't want to live right beside commercial. So that's how I feel about that section of the corridor, that, you know, we already paid to make it widen. Why are we going to make it narrow? So that's really all I have to say about it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Deborah Riott.
Good evening, my name is Deborah Reox, I live at 5640 North Rainbow Boulevard. The location of my house is right next to the corner property that has already been rezoned for a restaurant with a drive-through. What I would like to tell you is, it's no longer rural up there. In fact, it's very noisy. The traffic is getting more intense all the time. I live directly across from Walgreens, there's a lot of activity over there, and they do really well. What I would like to tell you is, is that I'm off for the commercial of all properties north of me on Rainbow Boulevard. And with that, I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Scott Sroats, and I own Kinder Prep Academy, which is at 5695 North Rainbow Boulevard. That's about three hundred yards behind Walgreens on the west side, north of Walgreens. And I support the commercial development. I think that, at one time, that was a really nice rural area, but ever since we've been there now fifteen years, it's definitely got a lot of traffic, and I don't see it going back to anything that's going to be nice and calm and quiet. So I support it.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening, Chairman and friends. I'm Michelle Fiori, former Assemblywoman Michelle Fiori, and this is my hood, so. And you guys know I'm a big rural person, and I'm very excited about what's taking place here because when, I live at 6205 Red Pine Court, which is in the Torrey Pines Estates, right across from Joseph Neal Elementary. And on Rainbow and Azure, where Walgreens is, and then the northeast corner, and then the other houses, and across the street, there's a couple of schools, the gentleman that owns one of them just spoke, that particular section, that piece, fits well to zone what the neighbors want. I have never seen such an organized neighborhood than the guys that you have just talked to. I mean, they've gathered all the folks around there, and they've asked them what their concerns were, and they've handled it, like they've handled it for all of you guys. And so I rise in support of their action, and I just wanted to let you know that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Epley, I live at 6717 Cambien Fine Avenue, Las Vegas, Nevada, 89130. I own two properties and live in north end of corridors. We don't have anything that me and my family can walk, such as neighborhood grocery stores and family dinner. We always go to the Sprout from Lake Mead, it's too far, so we want there near, you know, like Trader Joe's or Whole Foods. I would like to see the plan allow development further north of Anne Road, and this will be suitable for my family and would allow the neighborhood to be serviced better. That's it, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jim Epley, I'm at 5686 North Rainbow Boulevard, in the corridor on the north, I own another home in Torrey Pines Estates as well. I live there, and the one on Rainbow, it's Rainbow-facing, across the street from Walgreens, is, yeah, it's just not rural neighborhood anymore. We bought back there before the Walgreens was in, before the RPD-8 development was in, before everything else that did go commercial recently. I'm very supportive of the plan that has come up, I've been to the meetings with Mike, and I have a few comments here. I thought we'd have the plan available on screen to go through, so I'm just going to read through my notes, if you don't mind, I've taken some notes. On page ten of the draft, it talks about the land use and rural neighborhood preservation element, and the overlay district, and I just wanted to point out, the rural preservation overlay in Figure Four on the actual plan, that was developed back in 2000. That didn't protect and didn't limit the density to two units per acre as it was called for on Rainbow north of Anne. It started with the C1 with Walgreens on the northwest in 2001. That first contributed to the loss of the RMP protection. Then there was the RPD-8 development that came in 2006, and that's RPD-8, which is eight units per acre, but if you actually count the homes in that area, I was there and I was opposed to this at the time, there's a hundred and seventy-five homes that went in on about fifteen acres, so it was actually closer to twelve homes per acre at the time, but it's there, it is serviced for, it's open for walkability onto Rainbow Boulevard, it's got a nice wide opening, I think that's why it was developed that way in the first place for the Americana feel. Unfortunately, at the time, there just wasn't anything else available. This effectively eliminated the rural preservation overlay completely, we've got the two schools, like Mr. Sroats said, the Kinder Prep Academy came in about the same time, I think, 2002, 2003, and then there's another school adjacent to that. So that's all the west side of Rainbow, all those existing rural homes are gone on the west side, there's just a few that are left on the east side that are up against a wall, so to speak. No, it's hard for me to get tenants in my home that will stay there because it is on, it's on that hundred-foot roadway, and thirty-two hundred cars a day going back and forth on there right now. And as George said, the traffic's just going to continue to increase as the already-approved commercial developments go in. I won't know what to do with that property if we're not able to further develop north of Anne Road, and that's what the plan calls for, is not allowing anything further north of Anne Road to be developed into any type of commercial. On page eleven of the plan, it talks about the rural preservation overlay again, and I just wanted to point out that it's not even in the rural preservation overlay anymore because it's, if it's within three hundred and thirty feet of an existing street that's more than ninety-nine feet wide, that's exactly where these homes sit that are on Rainbow, and that's the biggest, probably objection to this overall plan is those homes that are on Rainbow. I've spoken to many of my neighbors in Torrey Pines Estates, many of my neighbors in that RPD-8 development, many of the neighbors on Rainbow right there, and most everybody is in support of walkability, of commercial development in that area. I don't, I haven't found any resistance myself to anybody that's opposed to any further development on the north side of that, and I know that's what it calls for in the plan, is no further development north of commercial, retail, or small grocery, or small restaurant north of there. And that's where I say I would be up against a wall, as many of my neighbors would be on Rainbow there. At the northwest, on page sixteen of the plan, at the northwest corner of Rainbow and Anne, there's currently the one commercial business, and as we said earlier, that home has been demolished on the northeast corner, it's been demolished, it's been, it's in the cleanup process right now, it's zoned for C1, and it's currently being prepared for development of some type of drive-through restaurant next to Mrs. Deborah Reox's place. On page twenty of the plan, it says Anne Rainbow specifically does not mention shopping center less than twenty-five thousand square feet, which is allowed on the, according to the plan, is allowed on the south side of Anne, so I'm wondering why there's a discrepancy in there. And I just want further development of the plan, is what I'm shooting for, before we go ahead and approve something and make it final, and we've got a few neighbors that are stuck in that area now, and we've got homes that are aging, they were built in the seventies, they're not rural, they're not rentable, and they're not adding value, they're actually detracting from the neighborhood at this point. The home-to-office conversion on page twenty-one of the plan, I don't think this type of rezoning is good, even Mike said, as the forty people that showed up to meeting, the office professional is not necessarily the way to go, as the lowest Harkenian's District on 95 and Jones, I have an office over there, and that 95 and Jones, which was set up in the eighties to go office professional, has never been fully developed, there's just a bunch of old, aging, crappy homes, and it's, the value is over there, or they're just continuing to drop, it's not a nice neighborhood to live in, and not a nice neighborhood, it's not walkable, it's not Americana, nobody's shopping in that neighborhood, it's attorney, 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 and then you've got the same thing on Eastern, which is tax, 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 and it's not conducive to a neighborhood that we're looking at here, and that's what our plan is, is to improve this neighborhood. That's the low-intensity, I believe, as mentioned, that the people at the meeting, the professional offices, it's already in abundance around town as well, many of these professional offices already sit vacant, that's not necessarily what's going to bring up the neighborhood. Service commercial, something that's going to service the neighborhood and be walkable to the neighborhood. Many of the residents in this Rainbow Corridor, the majority are north of Anne Road as well, and that's why I would like to see further development north of Anne Road. And in closing, I do agree that the Americana feel is great, staff's definitely headed in the right direction with where they're going, I just believe the plan is not fully developed for something that should be laid in place and approved as a final plan at this point. We need to take into account those Rainbow-facing properties, that will be the, that's the actual spine of the corridor, that's the main corridor, is Rainbow, and that's where these homes face, and we just don't want to see them stuck in some old and aging format. If we want to include a Main Street-type feel as Americana with shopkeepers, neighborhood retail, small grocery, we want to make sure that's included to the north, and I just want to, I don't want to close the door on the further development at this point. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, the public comment portion of this item is now closed, and we'll open this for discussion on the planning commission. Let's start with Commissioner Trowbridge.
Thank you, Chairman. I look at the survey results here, and I wonder how much they were really taken into consideration. You know, you've got, what, fifteen people in that entire area responded to the survey?
Well, to clarify, so the initial response rate was in the nineties, and then we had a filter, the first question was a zip code, because that dissemination was getting a lot of responses outside of the corridor area, so we wanted to filter down, and the only binding exclusionary thing that we had was the 89130 zip code that brought down comments coming strictly that were from residents on the corridor.
Thank you. So I was right in saying fifteen people in that area responded?
Correct, and that's, and the challenge, too, is also that that survey was disseminated through the mailers, also the councilmen's offices, four and six, through their newsletters. So it was made available, we passed it around, but it was challenging getting a high response rate.
I understand, but of those people that did respond, two of the most popular features people wanted to see was wide street with a wide landscaping median down the street, and others, it tied. The most popular other thing was to have, in the area that's forty-five miles an hour zone, they wanted to go to one lane with bicycle lanes, and Mike, I have this feeling that we're creating unrealistic expectations. You know, I look at the spot that the previous gentleman just mentioned, Jones Boulevard, you look at Jones between 95 and Charleston, and it's a hodgepodge, because it's all, every owner had to come forward by itself and get it changed to office from residential. And so, and each time, people came and complained because they were surprised that this was going commercial. I had several speakers tonight spoke what sounded to me like they were in favor of going more and more with the commercials along that zone, so that the people that live on Rainbow know what they're going to get. And I think we're probably not being straightforward with them, what they reasonably expect. I just, I'd make a bet with you, within the next ten years, there'll not be a blade of grass going down Rainbow Boulevard. And so the people are sitting around waiting for it, and I don't think it's going to happen. Bicycle lane along there, you've got to have some connectivity with other lanes, and I live over there, and I drive Rainbow, and I just don't see the connectivity, I don't see that Rainbow going to a single lane in both directions with bicycle lanes on the other side, with the big, beautiful rendering that shows all the landscaping going down the center, I just, I congratulate you on producing an excellent academic document, but I think that we need to talk to the people a little bit more before I could support it right off the bat.
Thank you, Commissioner. I also have a few comments. I appreciate all the neighbors that came out and spoke tonight. It's always interesting when we have an item in front of us that's a plan. You know, it's hard to say exactly what it is we're voting on, other than some, in this case, short-term and long-term recommendations. You know, all of us that live here, we know what Rainbow's like for the most part, but once you get north of Rancho, the character of Rainbow really changes. On one hand, it has this rural feel still to it, but at the same time, I think, as I've heard from the neighbors tonight, they recognize not only a desire, but a need for some commercial, if it's the right type of commercial. I applaud the city, you know, for having the vision to look forward to make some plans, and I think with neighbors like these, it's going to be nice to be able to sit down and speak to them, and maybe even before City Council, to start working out some more details that would fit the character of this neighborhood and this unique part of our north part of Rainbow. So for that reason, I'll be in support of the staff's recommendation for approval tonight. Commissioner Carrer, and then Commissioner Quinn.
Thank you, Chair. Through you, my concern is somewhat similar to Commissioner Trowbridge's in terms of talking about green space. I know that the RMP is either obsolete or soon to be somewhat obsolete with this to growth in the area that's happening, but I think there's still a way to try to find some way to create some type of ruralness, some type of greenness, some type of space, some type of buffering or something that kind of bridges into it. I know it's Rainbow, I know it's a major thoroughfare, and I know that, you know, it's, it doesn't necessarily call for it, but I think that with the creativity and the thought of the neighbors and of planning, we can come up with something that would create more than just hardscape, soften it up a little bit with some type of beautification, with some type of, you know, plants or green, open space. We talk about walking environment, that would definitely tie into it. Thank you.
Commissioner Quinn?
Thank you, sir, for doing such a nice presentation and for making it simple so we all understood. I think it's very commendable that so many neighbors came out this evening, so my question to you is, the neighbors seem very favorable with the way things are going, but my colleagues are suggesting more green space and a few other little things, so would it be, would it be good for us to hold it for another month to see if you can work some other things in, or do you feel like this is really it? I don't want to waste your time in another month from now.
Well, if I could respond on the roadway improvements, and the way it was discussed, and hopefully enough neighbors here can testify as witnesses, that the expectation was, you can't put the dreamy roadway in the plan and expect it tomorrow unless you're going to pay out of pocket for it. So we went through a lot of the mechanisms, SIDs, different things, but then also the possibility that if you have a ten-year plan through road improvements, some things, when you don't need the full median improvement, chicanes, all the options, possible grant opportunities for doing designs of just sections, it doesn't have to be an entire corridor. The key thing is, getting it in the plan as a component to investigate and follow up on, was very clear that that isn't guaranteed that it's in there tomorrow, but having it in the plan does give us the tool to pursue grants and other prioritizations, so that we can look at, what will it take over time to at least get the walkability increased? Because I do agree, getting a full landscape median for that portion of Rainbow, I don't know that would be appropriate, and it was also clear that there are some conflicts, there was some interest for lighting, but at the same time, and we all understand that they're, they've kind of lost the battle on rural neighborhood preservation, but you start put, lighting is a delicate subject, too. You know, what is that appropriate level of street lighting if the- You know, what is that appropriate level of street lighting if this areas remain quiet and dark at night?
Right. Thank you, sir, very much.
Okay. I think we're, oh, can I just comment on your question, because I don't know that it was answered about whether we hold this. My, it was actually something on my mind, and it was the reason why I said with the organized neighborhood like we have, rather than obey this and bring them back in front of the planning commission, my suggestion is the city give the opportunity to meet with these neighbors to discuss some of the things they want, and if they want to do that before City Council, great, but I think it should go forward with our vote. So I'd like to hear a motion.
Then I'd be ready to make a motion.
Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, if no one else has anything to speak on. We jumped over to item number 63, Director's Business 67582, to follow staff's recommendation this evening with approval, in hopes that you can maybe meet with them before City Council and grab some other ideas. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion is to follow staff's recommendation of approval on item 63. A motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, that item will be scheduled for a future City Council date.
Okay. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you very much.
We're now back to item 15, ZON 67385. The applicant is Sunrise Children's Foundation. The owner is Church Trinity Life Center. For possible action on a request for a rezoning from single-family residential and limited commercial to civic at 950 and 1,000 East St. Louis Avenue in Ward 3, staff recommends approval. Can we please have staff's report?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. The Church House of Worship is currently a legal non-conforming land use in the R1 Single Family Residential zoning district, as the use was established prior to the requirement of approved special use permit. By rezoning the subject site to civic, the subject site will be brought into compliance with both the general plan designation of public facility, but also with Title 1910 O2O, which allows a Church of Worship land use in a civic zoning district without the necessity of a special use permit. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm the applicant, Dave Sandberg.
Address, please.
2795 East Desert Inn Road.
Okay. I anticipate that Commissioner Slottman will have some questions for you, but do you have anything you want to tell us about the project?
Briefly, Sunrise Children's Foundation, first of all, is not part of Sunrise Hospital. We're a standalone nonprofit, 90% federally funded. We have several classrooms across the valley in 18 different locations and 344 enrolled children plus five WIC clinics. This location was sought out by us because of the need in that neighborhood. We deliberately target neighborhoods that have high-impact poverty, and the Early Head Start Program is for children ages zero to three and for parents that needs assistance with childcare. So our services are 100% free of charge to these families, providing they are going to school and working full-time and trying to get off of public assistance and be self-sufficient. This particular campus lends itself to our needs because there are various other programs there with childrens, with children that are siblings of these zero-to-three-year-olds. The areas, we actually have a WIC clinic right there at 1,000 East Sahara. So many of the families that would qualify for our program are already our clients in WIC. This particular campus is excellent for us because many of the families we service don't have transportation, so this provides a walkable distance for them to be able to drop their children off and have care from 6:30 in the morning till 6:30 at night.
Great. Okay. Item 15 has been noticed for public hearing. If any members of the public would like to be heard on this item, please come forward, state your name and address. Seeing none, I'll close the public comment and open this for discussion on the planning commission, beginning with Commissioner Slottman.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, through you. Thank you for coming up and staying with us for another hour. So have you been operating this facility for the past couple of years, or are you coming in and taking over this facility?
The facility, the classrooms that we are taking over, that we would like to lease, were once daycare facilities. The church was not able to sustain enrollment. As we know, daycare is very expensive, and for instance, we, our children are approximately $22,000 a year to attend. So with federal subsidy, we're able to take over those vacant classrooms that are right now just sitting, not being used. And so we really are.
Okay, thank you. And this is just basically, and I've misread this, and I heard from several people in the neighborhood and had to go back and read this again. I thought it was a special use permit, one of I heard from several neighbors with concerns that church with, you know, the early head start program and low income, and I, and I support all that, but they, they were a little bit concerned that it might turn into food shelter and other things of the sort. That's not your intentions. Okay. And, you know, I was going to put a one-year administrative review on it, but I noticed that this is just a zone change to bring it into compliance with zoning, so we can't even put a one-year administrative review. I have no further questions.
Any other comments? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, on item number 15, ZON 67385, I'd move to approve subject to staff's conditions.
Thank you. Motion is for approval. Please vote. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, this item will be heard at City Council on January 18th, 2017.
Okay. We're now to our last pulled item from the one motion, one-vote portion of our agenda. Item 16, VAR 67490. The applicant is Thunderbird Hotel, and the owner is 1215 South Las Vegas Boulevard, LLC. For possible action on a request for a variance to allow a 76-square-foot projecting sign where 32 square feet is the maximum allowed, and to allow the sign to be four feet above the rafter line where one foot is the maximum allowed at 1215 South Las Vegas Boulevard in Ward 3, staff recommends approval. Can we please have staff's report?
Mr. Chairman, evidence of a unique circumstance has been presented, and the proposed sign renovation is located within the scenic byway overlay, which outlines positive scenic features, which include 1950s-era motel signage. In addition, the proposed larger sign size will not be a detriment to public good or natural resources. It has been concluded that the applicant's hardship is not preferential in nature and is thereby within the realm of Nevada law statutes, Chapter 278, for granting of a variance. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Phil Mullins, 10816 Barkwood Avenue, Las Vegas. We're here tonight regarding this sign. I just wanted to point out, if you can see this here, this is not a new sign. This is just a refacing or renaming on an existing sign that's there. So it currently says the Aruba Club. We're taking down the letters spelling out Aruba and putting up the same-sized letters, same style of sign that says Thunderbird to represent the new name. The new signage is obviously higher because it has the same-sized lettering, same neon appeal, and it will now extend above the roof with the Thunderbird in order to maintain distance off the sidewalk. Just, I can ask any questions that you have?
Okay. Stick around, because there may be some. I will open this for public comment and invite the lady that came up earlier, if you'd like to be heard again on this. Do you have anything, anything in addition to what you told us earlier to add? I will need you to come up if you wish to speak. If not, I, you're welcome to stay where you are and listen to the discussion of the planning commission. We certainly know what your concerns were. Okay. All right. Does anyone else wish to be heard on this item? Seeing and hearing none, I'll close the public comment, and we can discuss this as a planning commission.
Through the chair.
Commissioner Cherry?
I live right outside of the notification area, and, I mean, knowing that it's a reface of an existing sign, I did hear the concerns about the lady that came up to the podium, and I understand it, but I just feel like it's been there for as long as I can remember. I really don't have an issue with refacing it, so you'll see my support in the application.
Commissioner Slottman?
Yes, Chairman, through you. I would agree with Commissioner Cherry, and, I mean, just sitting here looking at all the signs up and down that little portion of the block, I mean, we've seen these over and over throughout the years on DDR-C, but starting with Howard Johnson to is, you know, encroaching into the sidewalk, a little white chapel is hanging over and encroaching to the sidewalk. And then, as you go down, almost all these signs, as I'm looking on Google Maps right now, V Las Vegas, they all look like they're encroaching. I mean, this one's not encroaching any, anymore than any of the rest, and it actually has the least amount of impact, because it's probably one of the smallest signs, you know, out of all of those on that block. So I can support this application. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Commissioner Quinn?
Very briefly, I just want to put it on the record that this sign is 44 feet higher than the required 32 feet, and although I agree with my commissioners as to why we're going to approve it, I do want to make mention that this is on the record, so if their neighbor comes next door and wants to go up higher, that we give her the same courtesy, because, you know, we're really, you know, giving you a lot more feet than the law requires, so be nice to your neighbor. Thank you. With that, I'll make a motion this evening, if anybody has nothing else to say.
Please do.
For approval on item number variance 67490, staff's recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion is to approve item 16. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, item 16 is final action unless appealed to the city clerk's office within 10 days.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We are now to related items 34 and 35. Can I get an idea how many people are here tonight to speak on these two items, just by a raise of hand?
Yeah, nobody.
Okay. Item 34 is VAR 66657. The applicant owner is Regilio Cruz. For possible action on a request for a variance to allow 11 parking spaces where 22 parking spaces are required at 3808 Melody Lane in Ward 5, staff recommends denial. And item 35, abeyance, SDR 66658, for possible action on a request for a site development plan review for a proposed 6,604-square-foot building, maintenance, service, and sales building, with waivers of the perimeter landscape buffers to allow 10 feet along the east property line where 15 feet is required, and to allow 0 feet along the portion of the north and west property lines where 8 feet is required in Ward 5, staff recommends denial. Can we please have staff's report?
Mr. Chairman, the proposed development is too tense for the subject site, as evidenced by the associated variance to reduce required parking by 50%. Furthermore, as a development is proposed to accommodate only building, maintenance, service, and sales, any future uses such as general retail that will require additional parking will result in future variances. Staff has recommended denial of both applications. The site provides half of the required parking, fails to comply with the perimeter landscape buffer, and parking lot landscape requirements, including 37% reduction of the number of required trees, as well as the site is simply being overbuilt. Please note additional, an additional letter of protest has been received after the publication. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Nathan Taylor, 8414 West Farm Road, representing the applicant here tonight. I'd like to first, before I give my presentation, thank Commissioner Carrer for taking the time out of his day to stop by a few weeks ago and look at this property. It is a unique site. I believe my presentation, some of the things that I'll say, will show that this, this being a C2 property, this is going to be a much less intense use with the surrounding residential. This application is for a small business owner who operates an HVAC company. This will be his first commercial location here in the valley. The dress item number 34, and our request for the parking waiver, while code requires 22 spaces based on the square footage of the building, the reality is the property owner, Mr. Cruz, only owns three vehicles for his business, at least three trucks. His trucks are not kept on-site at the end of business. His employees take those trucks home. He may get additional trucks, but if he does in the future, he may add a couple more trucks. They serve the entire Las Vegas Valley currently with those three trucks with his businesses. What they will be doing is going to this property, this location with this building, and picking up supplies in the morning, and then going out into the field. I'd like to have Mr. Cruz real quick introduce himself and kind of explain his business model, so you, as commissioners, can get to know kind of how he operates.
Good night, everyone. My name is Rojela Cruz, and I'm the owner of R and R here in there. And pretty much what it is, I'm trying to run a HVAC and plumbing business. So pretty much, we pretty much need like two parking spaces for dispatching, dispatchers, but all the technicians that take their trucks home. So they're not going to stay overnight, and pretty much we're not going to have any traffic going on in that property. And, well, that's pretty much it, you know. That's why, that's one of the reasons why we're asking for those waivers, because we don't need that much parking space.
So the 11 spaces that we're requesting as part of our application is more than enough parking for this specific business model. We're hearing both items together, so I can address number 35 at this time, Mr. Chairman?
You can.
Related to item number 35, and our request to waive the perimeter landscaping buffers, we would like to withdraw that request, as we will agree to install the required 19 trees to buffer the residential around the property. I would also note that we plan to construct an eight-foot wall around all three sides of the property, and I'm just referencing my plan here. I've added some circles with Ts that weren't originally on this landscaping plan to show that we do plan to add those perimeter trees to meet code. The block wall will go along here, which is buffering residential, eight-foot block wall here, which is buffering residential, and then this is commercial property over here. Finally, although we were not required to, we held a neighborhood meeting on November 17th. There are some of those neighbors here today. I respectfully request approval of these two applications, and we're here to answer your questions.
Thank you. Both items 34 and 35 are noticed for public hearing, so we invite those members of the public that wish to be heard to come forward, state your name and address for the microphone, and tell us whether you're in support or against the project, and why.
Hi, I'm Kalana Dixon. I live at 1810 Willow Trail, which is the chase and, like, directly behind the property, I guess is a better way to say that. I actually have no problems with this. You know, at first I did. I did come, you know, a month or two ago, and I spoke about, you know, I wanted to know what kind of wall, what kind of fencing, what kind of things were going to be done to this property. And they did hold a neighborhood meeting, which, we had, I think, eight or 10 neighbors there that are right around there, and we all really liked what they had to say, because we actually got to learn what he wants now. We didn't know at that time. And so we actually don't have a problem with, because he's going to put a wall around it, so that makes it really feel secure for us as the neighbors. At first, we were like, it's going to be a little three-foot fence, and everybody can just jump over, so we were really nervous about it. But now we know what he's going to build, so we're really happy with the wall situation and stuff. And as far as the parking's concerned, we don't really have a problem with it being 11 spaces, because it's less traffic on the property, which we kind of like that. We like, we're in a rural neighborhood, we don't have sidewalks, we don't have streetlights. We're very low-key in this neighborhood, and so we kind of want his business to be as low-key as we are, is kind of what we're really after. So the less parking he has, the better it kind of works out for us, because that's the less noise we're going to have around there as well. You know, you know, we, you know, like I just said, we don't need curbs, we don't need all the other stuff, because we like it quiet in our neighborhood. And his business is going to probably do that. Anyway, we also, that lot is vacant right now, and there's all kinds of mischief going on, because the lot is vacant. So we'd be really happy to see the lot get used in this aspect.
Thank you.
My name is Donna Han. I live at 1911 Catalpa Trail. I own the properties next to where this gentleman must have put the warehouse. I have no objections to it, as long as a fence is between his property and mine. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, one last thing. She had mentioned, Kalana had mentioned about the streets and sidewalks. This particular area is rural. There are no sidewalks, curb, gutter, all that. So one of the requests that they had made to us during the neighborhood meeting was to allow us not to have to put in, they would rather us not put in sidewalk, curb, and gutter, because it takes away from the rural nature of their area.
Okay.
And finally, if I could turn this into the clerk, a neighbor that couldn't make it, send an email in.
You bet. We'll be happy to take that and make it part of the record.
We have a couple out of town, so they couldn't make it tonight.
Okay. All right.
I would like to say that I have lived in this neighborhood for over 60 years, and we've watched it grow from nothing. and we've watched it grow from nothing to one little house here, a little house there. And I'm very happy living there, and I just like it very much.
We'll hear from neighbors like you anytime you want to come in, so come on back.
I will.
All right. Thank you. All right, the public hearing is closed, and we'll open this for discussion amongst us, beginning with Commissioner Carrer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you. Yeah, I did go visit the site, and, you know, it's kind of an interesting site for the fact that there is commercial write-off arrantia maybe a couple blocks away. The wildfire casino is right there, but then as you move west, you're going to go into more of the residential area. So it's right on the cusp, and I think what he wants to do with this parcel of land seems appropriate. The neighbors behind it, they did do the neighborhood meeting, they get some people out, and I thank you for that, and I don't see an issue with it. I know that there's a lot of variances that are going into this parcel of land, but I think the fact that the trucks aren't being parked there, the fact that you seem to have a respect for the area already, that we won't have a problem. I would love to have a review, though, in a year, to take a look and make sure that things are going appropriately.
We're fine with that.
But I am in support of the recommendation, of the proposal, I should say.
Okay, great. Because it's so close to residential, I appreciate your willingness to comply with landscaping standards here. That was kind of a deal-breaker, in my opinion, so knowing that you're willing to do that, you'll also see my support on this. Commissioner Slotman.
Yes, Chairman, I was against this one until I heard the neighbors come out and speak. And honestly, I don't think that it's really the most compatible parcel or project for this parcel, however it is up against a C-two. I see that, and we do have the neighbors' consent. I do think that your neighbors are going to be burdened by your company, and I don't think they really realize what kind of impact that you're going to have on their company, because I know every HVAC company and plumbing company and all of this, and, you know, if you have three trucks, next year you're going to have six, and next year you're going to have twelve. And you have three suites, and you're going to be parking in front of their house, and then your customers and your tenants, or not tenants, your customers and everybody else are going to be coming by. And I think they're going to have more of an impact than what they actually think, but I'll go ahead and go along with this with a one-year administrative review, and if the neighbors are having an issue with this and parking, you're going to have to find some kind of off-site parking agreement or do something else. I'm really struggling with this one. I'll go along with it just because of the neighbors, but, and considering you're up against a C-two, but I think we're going to see some issues here.
I also like the idea of the administrative review. We can make sure that landscaping gets done, so I think we're ready for a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you, I'd like to make a motion to approve for gen item thirty-four, abeyance VAR six-six-six-five-seven.
Thank you. Please vote.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, is that?
Motion is for approval.
I understand with the additional condition.
Excuse me, yes, with the condition for a one-year administrative review. Thank you for the clarity.
Yeah, that, both that and the landscaping change that were on item thirty-five, the SDR.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner, have a good evening.
Can I place, for clarification, can I read in the added conditions in the record?
Please.
Thank you. Condition number one, a required one-year administrative review shall be conducted from the date of issuance of a business license. And number two, a revised landscape plan shall be submitted and approved by the Department of Planning prior to or at the same time as a smittle for a building permit depicting the installation of all required perimeter landscape trees and shrubs.
Thank you. We have one more gen item, thirty-five.
Because we've got conditions, we're going to need the applicant's approval, as those conditions have been read.
We're fine with it.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Gen item thirty-five, abeyance SDR six-six-six-five-eight. I move for approval with subject to staff's additional conditions.
Thank you.
For landscaping.
Please vote. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, items thirty-four and thirty-five are final action unless appealed to city clerk's office within ten days.
Item thirty-six is VAR six-six-six-eight-nine. The applicant owner is Winograd Yutka. For possible action on a request for a variance to allow a three-foot side yard setback where five feet is required for a proposed home addition at forty-six oh nine Del Monte Avenue in Ward One. Staff recommends denial. Would we please have the staff report?
Mr. Chairman, the proposed room addition is consistent, consists of extending the home into the rear yard to accommodate a dual kitchen, as well as the expansion of the home into the required side yard setback for a proposed laundry room. Staff cannot support the expansion of the home into the required side yard setback as the request is purely preferential in nature and is self-imposed hardship. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Hi, I'm Yutka Winograd. I live at four-six oh nine Del Monte Avenue.
Yeah, Stan Pelpek, three-six-five-five West Quail, GVS Construction.
What can you tell us?
Well, I went to my neighbors, and they saw no reason why it should be a problem having the variance, that it wasn't any hardship on them to have me two feet closer to them than I would be if I only went out that difference. What he describes as a hardship, I find the way it is currently as a hardship. My kitchen is not large enough for a kosher kitchen, which is why I'm trying to expand the kitchen, and currently, my laundry room is between my kitchen and my dining room. So to get to the dining room with food, you have to go through the laundry room. So building the utility room, which is what goes out into that variance requested area, would be my laundry room, and it would allow us to open up that walkway between the kitchen and the dining room to make it easier to get through, to make it more aesthetic, and it would make the whole thing more functionable. Currently, I'm, I've got storage racks in my kitchen just to keep appliances, to keep pots and pans, to keep my food, because there's very few cabinets in the kitchen. There is no storage. The garage was converted when the house was converted, prior to my purchasing it. The garage was converted to a room, so I do not have a garage for storage, and so I'm trying to make it so that this house is more desirable for me to live in long-term.
We were asked to get the letter from the neighbor. Do we have that?
Yeah, we'll take that and make it a part of the record tonight.
Yeah, I believe it was uploaded two weeks ago.
Item thirty-six has been noticed for public hearing. If anyone wishes to be heard on this item, please come forward. Seeing none, I'll close the public comment. Commissioner Quinn.
Thank you, Chairman. I drove by your house, and I didn't stop unexpectedly, but I did walk around a little bit, and I think what the bottom line is, is that your neighbor, Mrs. Helen Green, who lives directly next door to where this is going, is fine with it. Through you, Mr. Contractor, this is going to be a concrete addition that matches the house, right? No wood or not, you know, like cheesy wood or anything. Okay, and it's going to match the house exactly, roofline to roofline, and everything look nice. Okay, well, with that, I don't have a problem with this, because I understand that you can't just pick up, move, make your kitchen bigger, but you can make your house bigger to make your kitchen bigger, so I hope it works out for you. And with that, my motion will be to make a recommendation for approval, as well as to go on to city council for the councilwoman to look at it. And so, abeyance variance six-six-six-eight-nine. My motion this evening is for approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion is for approval of item thirty-six. Please vote. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, item thirty-six will be heard at city council on January eighteenth, twenty-seventeen.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good luck. Item thirty-seven, SUP six-six-eight-zero-six. The applicant owner is Zeus One Investments LLC. For possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed short-term residential rental use with a waiver to allow a two-hundred forty-one-foot distance separation from a similar use where six-hundred sixty feet is required at sixteen-twelve South Sixth Street in Ward Three. Staff recommends denial. Would we please have staff's report?
Mr. Chairman, the applicant is proposing to operate a short-term residential rental unit that does not meet the minimum required distance separation of six-hundred sixty feet from a similar use. Due to the required waiver, staff is recommending denial as the use is non-compatible. Please note that there are additional letters of protest since publication.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Laura Drea, five-twenty South Fourth Street. I'm here with Isaac Rosolio, who's the owner of the house at sixteen-twelve Sixth Street. Isaac and I find it unfortunate that we're here before you speaking, seeking a special use permit for this. When Isaac bought the property in February of this year, it qualified for a conditional use permit per ordinance six-four-seven-seven, because it met separation requirements at the time, at six-hundred sixty feet. He was therefore able to bypass this board and move towards business licensing. His process involves scheduling different inspections for interior improvements and fire safety. Unfortunately, within that time, a nearby home applied for and was granted a license, thereby striking us from contention of a conditional use permit, and therefore making us appear before this board. From our perspective, this was an unfortunate mishap versus a self-imposed hardship. Obviously, we don't wish a saturation of this use any more than Mr. Figler or any of the neighbors of the John S. Park neighborhood or the Beverly Green neighborhood, and we hope that they can forgive us for that. We're committed to being a good neighbor, and we're happy to accept an annual review. Isaac put considerable amount of money into his home. It's his best, in his best interest to ensure the property does not become a party house. His lease is therefore very strict. It includes a significant deposit and substantial penalties for those who breach. He's with me to answer any questions either before or after public comment.
Okay, thank you. I'll open this for public hearing. Is anyone here to speak on this this evening? Please come to the microphone and state your name and address.
Good evening, Chairman and Directors. Walt Coons, sixteen-eleven South Sixth Street. I live across the street from this home. Since September, it's been used as a party house. A lot of people coming and going almost every weekend. It has been occupied, out-of-state plates, a lot of cabs, a lot of Uber vehicles, a lot of people. They come and go at all hours of the day and night, and they like to party at night. So they'll leave at ten or eleven at night to go party. They'll come in at three or four o'clock in the morning, a lot of car doors slamming. They have no inhibitions about dumping their liquor bottles at four or five o'clock in the morning into the large ninety-gallon trash bins. I am against this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Hart Fleischauer. I live at eighteen-sixteen South Ninth Street, Las Vegas, Nevada, eight-nine-one-oh-four. I object to having any of these short-term rental properties in our neighborhood. I've invested heavily in the neighborhood to try to make it a nice, quiet community. The rental properties I own have very strict contracts, making sure that people maintain a quiet, peaceful community in neighborhood. I've lived in the neighborhood for almost twelve years now, and it's the type of neighborhood where you run into your neighbors at the grocery store, and everybody's very peaceful. You have a problem with the child in the neighborhood, there's no problem, because everybody knows each other. We just go knock on the door and talk to their parents. Very quiet, peaceful neighborhood. It's in transition. We still have some people that are retired people in the neighborhood that have lived there their entire lives and bought those houses new. We want to keep it quiet and peaceful and not short-term rentals. So I please ask that you deny this, not only for this person, but to deter others in the future from investing in our neighborhood for this reason. Thank you.
Excuse me, through you, Mr. Chairman. What was your address, sir? I missed it.
One-eight-one-six South Ninth Street.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the planning commission, David Figler, thirteen-oh-two South Sixth Street. I am coming as an individual property owner and also in the capacity as the president of the historic John S. Park neighborhood. This particular property was the prime focus of the last neighborhood meeting, which we had, which was about two weeks ago. There was a universal mandate, I guess, as president, to come to the meeting and representing the forty or so individuals who were there. There is a huge concern of an encroachment of short-term rentals and the negative side that impacts a quiet neighborhood like ours, a historic neighborhood like ours, with regard to the proliferation of what seems to be the proliferation of these short-term rentals, knowing that there's not sufficient code enforcement and the transition into what is essentially becoming party houses. The amount of parking on Sixth Street, which is a thoroughfare street, and there's a lot of families and children on that street, has been gravely impacted by the number of cars, especially those without out-of-state plates, that have just been crowding up our streets ever since the short-term rentals started appearing, especially on Sixth Street. It's been a real problem. The observations of my neighbor are accurate with regard to the character of Six. The problem is with these short-term rentals is, well, it's many-fold, but the encroachment has been something which needs to be addressed. I'm glad to hear from Director Dulson that they are looking at the ordinance. Certainly, our neighborhood and the adjoining neighborhoods want to be part of that process, and we hope that we can be notified of any public hearing, certainly, and any sort of planning meetings or business license meetings. We would love to have our input on that. But with regard to this particular property, the main concern is that the separation requirement is the last vestige of sanity when it comes, at least to this issue as it arises and as everyone is starting to figure it out. One-year reviews, one-year reviews, rather, are not going to address the immediate concerns of the neighborhood and the immediate impact on the neighborhood. What we have are cars coming all night long. The disruption to the neighborhood pets, the barking all night, is directly increased and directly attributable to these short-term rentals. The more short-term rentals in a smaller space, the problem it's going to be. My heart goes out to the LLC that purchased this home with the specific intent of making it into a business, of making it into a hotel, of changing the character of our neighborhood from historic residential homes that have been steadily increasing in property value, even despite the bubble that occurred to the rest of the valley, and taking what are historic houses, gutting them out, making them something other than historic houses, and making them something geared specifically intended to be a business. When short-term rentals initially came up, I remember those meetings, and people were talking about them peacefully folding into the neighborhood without anyone noticing, that it would be owners who are gone for a few days or a few months and be able to earn a little extra income, but they would ultimately be responsible for the properties. That's not what we're seeing in practice, and certainly, a renovation of the short-term rental code is now, the time is now for that. But the adding in and giving variances to make more of a cluster, especially on Tony Streets like Sixth and Seventh and Eighth, I did take up Director Dulson's good advice to look on the city website, and we did find that there is a proliferation of these in the neighborhood, and all the neighborhoods, and all the neighbors, the long-term neighbors, even the people who are renting out those properties who have one-year leases, they're concerned that we don't know who the folks are who are coming in and out of our neighborhood. So many folks coming in and out of our neighborhood, so much liquor going into these places, so much activity into late-night hours. I ask you to enforce the separation requirement until cooler provisions can be made, so we could figure out exactly what's going on, so we could talk about impact on historic neighborhoods like ours, and really, all neighborhoods throughout the city. But we implore you as a neighborhood to not allow yet another short-term rental, this time outside the separation or in violation of the separation requirement to go forward, and I do that with the authority of being the president of our Neighborhood Association. Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to give the applicant a brief response, and then I'll close the public comment.
First, in response to Mr. Coontz claiming that there was a disturbance, the only rental that has been done at this property was a forty-day rental, and we weren't aware of any disturbance that was associated with that forty-day rental. As far as Isaac's concerned, that went very smoothly. Secondly, while John S. Park is a very quaint neighborhood, not all properties are well-maintained. There are a few that are boarded up, and as you can see from this overhead, this is a photo of the very next door. a photo of the very next door to the property that Isaac had purchased. Vagrants are living there. So we do feel that we are adding some value to the neighborhood. Unless Isaac has something else to add, we can answer your questions.
Few things about the concerns of the neighbors. There is no intention-
I need your name and address.
Isaac Rosolio, 4575 Dean Martin. The house, there is no intention to make the house a party house, not now, not in the past. It's not the intention, and the money that was invested in the house, obviously, it's not to ruin it. Second thing, and very important, is that before purchasing the house and during the process of the renovation and the money invested in the house, I was in very close contact with the planning department to make sure that I can do what I do. I didn't want to be here. That's why I was in very close contact with them, to make sure that there is nobody around me doing the same thing, because I was aware of the, of the limit. And I was told that everything is okay, I can go ahead and purchase the house. After I purchased, I began the remodeling, and during that time, so many inspectors came and make the work longer and more expensive, that time, one of my neighbors got the permit, and at the end, when I went to try to get it, I was told that I can't, after a lot of work and money that was, was invested.
We are confident that we can operate this in a way that's favorable to the neighbors. Again, we look forward to an annual review. Mr. Figler is familiar with our office. If there's any ways that he thinks that he'd be more comfortable with this property, he's welcome to call us in that year. And again, if it weren't for that 660 feet, we wouldn't even be here tonight. I'll close with that.
Okay. Thank you. I'll close the public comment and open this for discussion on the commission. Start with Commissioner Carrer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. The problem that I have with short-term rentals is the enforcement of what you, of what your intention is. You know, it's 1 o'clock in the morning, there's no ways, there's bottles, there's been issues in not particularly this neighborhood and other neighborhoods where there's been, you know, fornicating in the street, there's, you know, all types of things that, that happen. And then there's zero enforcement. But you say, "Well, I'm going to put a big security deposit up, and that's going to help hinder that." Maybe it does, maybe it doesn't, but there's zero enforcement. You can't call Metro, because Metro's got a lot going on, and they won't be out. And you, you can't keep doing that, and the neighbors have a right to live in an environment that is palatable for them. They didn't purchase their home to be in the middle of a rave, or people making all kinds of noises. They, this neighborhood is a very historic neighborhood and has a lot of value to Las Vegas, I believe. So it's going to be very tough for me to get behind supporting short-term rentals in, in such an established neighborhood because of the fact that people, you can rent it out, people come, people go, people come, people go, and there's no ownership. And so I'm, I'm not in support of short-term rentals, for the most part, in certain areas, possibly. If it was closer towards the entertainment district, Fremont Street East or downtown or something like that, then maybe, but this is a very established, quiet neighborhood, and I can't see myself supporting something like this. If there was better enforcement, possibly, because then you could call someone, the neighbors could say, "Hey, come out," you get, whatever might happen. But you might say you will enforce it, but at the end of the day, you won't, you just can't. So I won't be supporting it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Carrer. I do have a question, probably for our deputy director, and that is, assuming, and I will assume it was true, that a conditional use permit was granted in this case, do we have a safeguard in place to prevent what happened here from recurring? That is, what, with that conditional use permit in place, then someone coming in getting a special use permit and voiding the, the conditional use?
Mr. Chairman, yes, since this case came through, what happened was that he was denied by the fire department while he was working to correct things. Because that happened, someone else was able to come in. I worked with this gentleman, we met on several occasions and spoke, and were able to at least get him this far in front of you all. The system, the computer system, we had the, the fire department going into the new computer system at that time. We have since gotten all those departments together to come up with a system to make sure once someone is in, in that system, that if they're actively working on something, they have a certain period of time to do that before it would be denied and someone else would be able to come in.
Okay. Thank you. Other comments? Commissioner Slottman?
Yes, Chairman, through you. Just a few comments, and, I mean, this is, I'm, I'm really sensitive to the neighborhood and this particular neighborhood, since this is my ward. And, you know, it's really unfortunate what happened, you know, due to the fact that, and I'm not saying that we should be pro-business over the neighborhood or anything else, but it really is unfortunate that you went in, or else nobody would have known, and that's just the way that our code is written. And, and, you know, I'm kind of torn, because I don't want to see the proliferation of, you know, the short-term rentals, especially in our, you know, John S. Park and Mary Crest and Beverly Green, our old historic neighborhoods. And like, when you get closer down to Fremont and those areas, I agree that it's, you know, a little, little bit easier to, to get approved and a little bit more accepting amongst the people, but it's a very vocal neighborhood. You know, our former planning commissioner, Steve Evans and myself, went to Hawaii, Hawaii about two or three months ago, and we actually stayed in Airbnb, and, because we didn't want to stay in a, in a resort. And so, you know, I think just looking at all short-term rentals as being the worst thing out there, we have to look at, at them on their merits and, and plus where, where they're located. So, and I don't know what we can do about enforcement, because I know that we don't have the code enforcement officers to go out and check, especially at night, and, but, you know, we do have a noise ordinance, and we don't want, you know, the neighbors have to call over and over, and, and certain neighborhoods, they might not show up as quick as, as other neighborhoods. So anyways, I'd like to hear from the rest of my commissioners, but it is a real sensitive topic, especially in this neighborhood.
Commissioner Trowbridge.
Thank you, Chairman. I've got two areas that I'd like to just explore briefly. Is this map accurate? Because I only see one short-term rental in this entire circle of 660 feet. Is that accurate, what's there now?
Mr. Chairman, through you. In the online backup, we have the special map that shows the, the locations of the other, the other ones. The other short-term rental that is in that, that circle or the, no, or the, the separation area would be South 6th Street, just, just south of Oki, three houses down on the east side.
Yeah. Where I was going at is the comment that somebody made, that there's a proliferation of short-term rentals in this neighborhood, and I'm, I don't see it. This, the second question is that, one of the comments that was made, that there's been operating as a short-term rental, there's people in and out of there all the time, but yet you testified that you've only had one rental, and that was for a 40-some-day period. Is that still accurate?
The renters, not 40, more than 30 days. Not exactly 40, but more than 30 days.
What's more?
And it's clean. The property is clean, the backyard is clean, the front is clean. I live here, so I'm here, I'm there all the time. There are cameras on the outside.
That's not what I'm asking. No, what I'm asking is, are you currently using it as a short-term rental facility? And if so, how frequently have you been renting it?
He's not rented it for less than 31 days, since he bought it in, the sale recorded March 1st of 2016.
I thought you said that he had had one tenant in there, and it was 41 days or something.
Right. A short-term rental is considered 31 days or less. He's rented it 40 days.
Oh. Phew, got by that one. Okay, then I, I understand the predicament that, that you're in, that you've, you know, bought the property, you've made significant improvements, and it was apparently a significant enough incident that we changed the rules so it won't happen again to anybody else. And so, as, as tough a decision as this is, and I understand the, the neighborhood and their involvement, I, through no fault of this gentleman, he's, stands to be hurt significantly, and I, I'm just not a fan of that, so, thank you.
Commissioner Phalengas, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to concur with Commissioner Trowbridge on this one. It seems like this was, you know, you were doing the right things that you were supposed to do with this, and because you were slowed up because of the fire department, somebody else came in there, and we should have had something in place to, you know, the other person shouldn't have probably been allowed to go forward since you were pending. So I'm going to support your application tonight and urge my commissioners to do so as well.
Commissioner Cherry?
Through the chair. So if there was a special use permit granted, and there's an issue, it comes back within a year or before that for us to discuss again, what about the, the house down the street that has the conditional business license? If there's a complaint against the actual business license, what, what happens then?
Mr. Chairman, if I might, under our short-term rental ordinance, if there's multiple complaints or multiple violations that we can substantiate, the director can suspend or revoke that business license, and then they would have to reapply after a certain period of time.
Thank you. And I'm extremely sensitive to this neighborhood. I live in the general area, not in the notification radius, but I, I feel like I am compelled to support it with a one-year review, just because of the circumstance that the applicant's gone through. So I, and I'm very hesitant to do it, I will say that, because I, I go in this area quite a bit. I have friends in this area. This one's a tough one. Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Quinn?
I'll tell you, this really is a tough one, because we did meet together, and Commissioner Trowbridge was with us, and I was under the impression that the 600, what is it, 600 feet away is supposed to be? And you said you guys only missed that by five feet, and then when I did my own math, it's really 359 feet. So that's a lot farther. I mean, it's not as, I don't think our numbers were the same, is what I'm trying to say, is what you shared with me and what I, what I understood. And this is a very tough one for me, too. And I would tell you this, I would hands-down vote no on this. I don't want this kind of thing going on in my ward, but I tend to agree with my fellow commissioners, Mr. Cherry and, and Mr. Trowbridge. I find it very unsatisfactory that you were in the process of doing everything right, and someone jumped ahead of you and got what the license at, in my opinion, would have been rightfully yours. I don't want you to think that in two months you can come back and say, "We got one 359 feet away, but it should be 600," or, because this is not going to happen for me again. The only reason that I'm going to support this is because of the amount of work and time and effort you did to do everything right, and you ended up not winning because someone beat you to it. And I think when we get these things in place to let people know there's already an application, we won't be facing this again. So with that, I'll make the motion this evening.
Thank you.
Through the chair, if I, if I may, if there is, if this does go forward and there is some type of complaint or issue that's substantiated, I, I wouldn't be sympathetic to let it go on, just so the applicant knows. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Quinn?
Thank you. With that, number 37 SUP 66806, I'm going to make the motion for approval, but I, I think the administrative review, because you are up and running, should be six months, not one year. Is that okay with you, Commissioner? Slottman?
I, I would think that if, if approved, a six-month review from the time of the issuance of a business license would be appropriate.
Thank you, sir. So with that, my motion is for approval, with the additional thing that it'll be a six-month administrative review versus a year. And I'm the kind of person that I go online and I check complaints, and I look up Metro stuff, so don't think I don't say. But that, my motion is for approval.
Please vote.
Mr. Chairman-
Oh, does the applicant agree to the six-month review?
Yes, he does.
Just for clarification on the condition, I would read as follows. An administrative review shall be conducted six months from the date of business license issuance.
Thank you.
That's correct. Thank you.
Please vote.
Mr. Chairman, this item will be heard at City Council on January 18th, 2017.
Thank you. We are just past two hours, but the next group of items, we've heard before, and I expect to go relatively quickly, so I do want to take these items before we break. Rela, items 38 through 43 are related, beginning with 38. The applicant owner is 7470 LLC for possible action on a request for a variance to allow a 35-foot residential adjacency setback along the north property line where 51 feet is required at the northeast corner of Deer Springs Way and Walupi Way in Ward 6. Staff recommends denial. Item 39, SUP 67486, for possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed car wash, full service, or auto detailing in Ward 6. Staff recommends denial. 40, SUP 67487, for possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed mini storage facility in Ward 6. Staff recommends denial. Item 41, VAC 67470, for possible action on a request for a petition to vacate U.S. government patent easements on property at northeast corner of Walupi Way and Deer Springs Way in Ward 6. Staff recommends denial. Item 42, SDR 67484, for possible action on a request for a site development and plan review for a proposed 3,868 square-foot general retail store, other than listed, convenience store, with fuel pumps and a 4,212 square-foot canopy. A 1,112 square-foot general retail store, other than listed, a 2,300 square-foot car wash, full service, with a waiver to allow the car wash bay to face the public right-of-way where such is not permitted, a 2,220 square-foot restaurant with drive-through, a 2,061 square-foot restaurant with drive-through, and a 699 unit, 93,876 square-foot mini storage facility with a waiver to not orient the buildings to the corner and street fronts where such is required, and a waiver to allow a 10-foot landscape buffer along the south and west perimeter where 15 feet is required in Ward 6. And finally, item 43, TMP 67469, for possible action on a request for a tentative map for a proposed one-lot commercial subdivision in Ward 6. Staff recommends denial. Would please have staff's report.
Mr. Chairman, previously, applications for this development were submitted in conjunction with a general plan amendment and rezoning, and were forwarded to City Council with the recommendation of approval. At the City Council on 10/19/16, they were approved, but the GPA was reduced from the original request of general commercial to service commercial, with a corresponding reduction in the rezoning request from C2 general commercial to C1 limited commercial. With these changes, the associated site development plan review and variance were withdrawn without prejudice to allow the applicant to resubmit the project with additional special use permit applications for the mini storage facility and car wash, as required by the approved C1 zoning district, as well as request for vacation right-of-way and a tentative map. The proposed development still requires the approval of variance of the residential adjacency proximity slope requirement, as the mini storage building is too close to the northern property line for the height of the structure, and waivers are required for building orientation and to allow car wash bays, bay doors to face the right-of-way. Staff has added the same conditions required at the previous planning commission meeting to the site review regarding hours of operation for the restaurant and car wash, as well as requiring security year-round. Previous condition regarding the perimeter landscape- Previous condition regarding the, the perimeter landscaping was omitted as the applicant addressed that issue with the new landscape plan. Staff does not support these requests and recommends denial of all applications. Please note that the most recently revised site plan is included in your blue sheeted materials, and also note that there are additional letters of protest since publication.
Thank you very much. And let me just say, before we hear from the applicant and, uh, any members of the public, having heard this already and having sent it on to City Council with an approval with a higher zoning, I'm going to limit the applicant's remarks to three minutes tonight, and any neighbors to one minute, so, good evening.
Good evening. Uh, for the record, Jay Brown, 520 South Fourth Street, excuse me, representing the applicant, and with me is the applicant's architect, George Rogers. As heard by staff and as mentioned by the chairman, we previously appeared before you requesting C2, after you were kind enough to approve our application, and before we went to the city, we thought it was in everyone's best interest to reduce our zoning request to C1. Because this site is now C1, we need additional special use permits, as well as other approvals. Before turning the microphone over to Mr. Rogers, I would like to call your attention to item 42, SDR 67484, conditions number two. Looking at national, uh, drive-through tenants, it became apparent that they required business operations not conclude at, uh, 10:00 PM. Therefore, we would ask that you eliminate that condition, and with that, I'll turn the microphone over to Mr. Rogers.
Thank you.
George Rogers, 6325 South Jones. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The site plan is substantially the same as you've seen it. Few little differences we've added, a lot more landscaping along the buffers, but the intense landscaping on the north and the east sides are still there. There's still an 11-foot difference between the residential to the north and the mini-storage. The mini-storage has a basement, it's a little bit bigger, but we parked it, um, really quite well. Uh, just one comment, the door of the car wash is some 269 feet to the adjacent residential to the west. It's quite a long distance, and there's a, a arterial street in the middle, but I'm available to answer any questions you have.
Okay, thank you. Items 38 through 43 have been noticed for a public hearing. Any members of the public that wish to be heard, please come forward, state your name and address. We do have three microphones.
Good evening, commissioners.
Good evening.
My name is Bridget Salvi. I live at 7030 North Conquistador Street. You gave me one minute, so I will try to hit as many as I can. I, after reading this more detailed information, the canopies at 4,200-plus square feet is larger than my house, including my garage. That just blew my mind tonight. I have read through the conditions, and I've noticed that with the storage unit, there is a proposed five vehicles available for rent, so they're not only going to have a storage unit, but they're going to have trucks parked pretty much all the time, unless they're short-term brought out for a moving client and then brought back in and they're parked. So now we not only have a storage unit, but we have moving trucks that are parked on-site. And this is from staff report, page five, planning commission meeting, and it's just one, it says requirement four. I can't tell you what number page it is, because it's not really lined up very well. And then, I know my landscaping, the intense landscaping that was suggested for Sephora, Secundiflora, or a Texas mountain laurel, I have some planted. My neighbor has a mature one, and it is barely 12 feet high. In premium environment, in premium, uh, conditioned soil, it may get 25. The landscaping is inappropriate, and for them to ask for this many variances, this many waivers, these many, uh, exceptions, to plant an overly developed design, that's the same design that we've been battling since the beginning, and with no changes, is inappropriate. I please, I beg the commissioners, shut this down. Please vote denial.
Thank you. Good evening.
Hi, my name is Teresa Merritt. I live at 9812 Guiding Light. I have been here before, too. You know that we asked for this not to be rezoned to commercial. The developer bought this property knowing what the requirements are for this type of thing. They want all these variances, special use permits. At the very least, for us, make them adhere to the minimum required, requirements required. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Mark Kornheiser. Live at 9726 Guiding Light Avenue. I think that the last time this matter came before you, the, the main focus was that this area, really, this corner couldn't support residential usage. And I, I have to really disagree with it. I have a couple pictures, I hope this is lined up correctly, but a block north of it, this is bordering on the residential. Across the street, this is an apartment complex that, that, uh, car wash is going to be pointing the noise at. I, I'm a new owner in this area, I was trying to move into the area first, as my house was being built on Guiding Light Avenue, and I was trying to get into this apartment building, or an apartment building in the area, just to watch the house being built, make sure it's being done right. I couldn't do that, because it was just sold out, couldn't move into this area. It's really, more housing is needed. The next one, a block east, this is our area, almost sold out, 90 homes. This is two blocks north, DH Horton Complex, just opened up, starting to sell. So there's a lot of selling going on of homes in this area. This one especially is important. This area, and if you think Walopie and Deer Springs is getting a lot of noise and might not allow-
So I'd let you go 40 seconds over, and ask you to wrap it up.
Okay, I'm very sorry. I'm not used to public speaking. Thank you-
You're welcome.
-for your consideration. Uh, this area here is, uh, just across the street from the project. This one, instead of being on Walopie and Deer Springs, this is right on 215. This whole complex sold out. There's really, and these people, 215's a lot noisier than Walopie or, or Deer Springs. There's a need for homes in this area, and we really could use the homes versus reclassifying it as commercial. And I hope also, and if this doesn't go through, and I know you've seen it, and this is sliding-
I, I'm sorry, I need to cut you off now.
Can I just ask-
I can't let everyone go, you know, a minute and a half over what I've, I've allowed.
I'd like to ask for an administrative review of, of this, if it should go through. Thank you. I'm sorry to take-
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. I'm going to ask for a one-minute, uh, response from the applicant.
Before Mr. Brown, um, makes an address, I just want to say one thing. The Texas laurels, um, that are on the north and the east side of the property were recommended by staff. We, we chose, we really didn't choose them, we had another tree, and staff recommended them. Also, the finished floors of the residential and the north of the mini-storage, the mini-storage will only project about 10 feet above the floor of the house that's right there, and so, a 12-foot tree would buffer the building at that point, let alone an 18 or 20 or 25-foot tree. But, that is just information for you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'll close the public, uh, comment, and-
That's fine.
Mr. Brown, did you want to take what was left?
No, that's fine.
Okay, all right. Uh, close the public comment and open this for discussion, and, and let me begin. Uh, as I stated at the beginning, we did approve this, and it went forward to City Council, uh, at C2. Uh, I am still convinced this is an appropriate place for commercial, that these are appropriate uses. What we have now is with a, a lower zoning, um, you know, at, at C1 as opposed to C2, we have more protection for the neighbors, uh, we have more protection because of those SUPs in place, and, uh, I, I appreciate the gentleman's comments about, uh, you know, the comparisons, but I, I think you also have to consider, you know, at what point was the, the, either the residential or the, you know, the apartments where they build? Uh, it's one thing to have them in place as these, uh, as these corridors get busier and busier, it's another thing to have someone come in and expect a, a neighbor to move in on an intersection like that, so, um, I, you, you will see my support on, on this project and these applications. Commissioner Quinn?
Thank you. Um, through you, Mr. Brown, when we discussed the, um, the drive-through, uh, you, um, said that you're looking for a national vendor, of course, to come in, and then you decided, um, that it would not be a 24-hour voice drive-through, right? And you said you'd shut it down at 2:00 AM, am I correct in saying that?
We can live, we can live with that, we can live with that, Commissioner, if, if that's what you like.
Well, I think it's kind of only fair to the neighbors. I could go 1:00 AM, but maybe 2:00. The second thing is, um, I'm curious, you're not, um, talking with vendors to fill that drive-through that, um, also provide alcohol? You know, we have some places now that are, you can drive through and get the booze kind of thing. No?
No.
Okay, not that I can tell you not to, but I'd really like not to. Then can we talk just for a minute, the hours of operation of the, um, storage units? Most of them down on Rancho Road are open from 7:00 in the morning until 6:00, Monday through Friday, and 10 to 5:00 on Saturday and Sunday. Do you have the hours of operation for the, um, storage units?
Office hours are with 10 to 6:00, and by 9:00 o'clock, no one will be able to go to their unit, so 9:00 PM closing.
So 10 to 6:00, and the place shuts down at 9:00, and that includes the weekends? Am I correct in saying that?
Yes.
Yes, you are.
Okay, that, that's kind of how it is down my street. Um, oh, so I asked about the, that, I asked about, okay, so that's my few questions I wanted answered before I make my vote. Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Thank you.
Commissioner Schlotman?
Yes, uh, Mr. Chairman, through you, um, I, I agree with the comments you made and Vicki, or Commissioner Quinn. Um, the, the one thing is, with the drive-through, I don't feel that, um, that they typically change the, the loudness of the speaker, speaker, uh, from day to night or any, anything, so, basically, if it's too loud during the day or too loud during the night, if they shut it off at 1:00 or 2:00 or 3:00 or 5:00 in the morning, uh, it's not really going to make that big of a difference, in my opinion, because we have a noise ordinance, and if you can hear it at 50 feet, I think, uh, then they're, I mean, they can have the cops called out or have the code, uh, complain against them, so, um, I'm not worried with, uh, about them staying open 24 hours a day. And, uh, and I appreciate you putting in the additional landscaping since our last meeting, thank you.
Commissioner Flankis?
Mr. Chairman, I'm ready to make a motion.
Yes, thank you.
For item number 38, which is VAR 67, uh, 67706, move to approve, subject to conditions.
Please vote. Item 38 is approved.
Mr. Chairman, item number 39, which is SUP 67486, move to approve, subject to conditions.
Please vote. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, item number 40, SUP 67487, move to approve, subject to conditions.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, are there hours of, of operation on the conditions as written, or do we need to add those, um, here? Because I think it's important that they're not open all night long.
It's not part of my motion.
It's not? So they can be open 24 hours?
On what?
On the storage units.
Is one of the conditions on that, uh, does it have limiting hours?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, the current site development review is where the hours of operation conditions, um, currently reside, but there is not one specific to the mini-storage facility at this point in time.
Okay.
I'll keep my motion as is, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Please vote.
Thank you.
Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, item number 41, which is VAC 67470, move to approve, subject to conditions.
Thank you, please vote. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, item number 42, which is SDR 67484, move to approve with the additional removal of condition number two.
Thank you, please vote. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, item number 43, which is TMP 67469, move to approve, subject to conditions.
Please vote. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, items 38, 39, 40, 41, 42, and 43 are all final action unless appealed to the City Clerk's office within 10 days.
Okay, Lex, it's your warning. I can turn your mic off if you go too long. Yeah, shuts it right off. Okay, there you go.
Yeah.
Thank you. New trick on my last day as chairman. Yeah, thanks a lot. This planning commission meeting is called back to order. We are now on item 45, SDR 67419. The applicant is Nevada H&amp;C Distillery, and the owner is City Parkway V5 Incorporated. For possible action on a request for a site development plan review for a proposed 4,650 square-foot warehouse building, a 5,100-square-foot manufacturing-heavy and office building, an 8,500-square-foot manufacturing-heavy office and retail building, a 1,200-square-foot storage building, and a 3,200-square-foot banquet facility with an ancillary concert stage with waivers of perimeter landscape buffer requirements to allow a zero-foot-wide landscape buffer along portions of the north and south property lines where eight feet is a minimum required in Ward 5. Staff recommends denial. Could we please have staff's report?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The subject site will be constructed in three phases, with the development of the first two phases used primarily for the warehousing and distillery operation. The proposed retail office exhibits face banquet facility and required parking will be added with a future third phase. Perimeter landscape waivers have been requested, and staff recommends approval due to the industrial nature of the area and the presence of site constraints such as the Union Pacific Railline and US 95 overpass. The site is located within the Las Vegas redevelopment area, and the uses and development proposed are appropriate for the area. In addition, the associated variance to allow an unpaid parking lot has been withdrawn, and as such, staff recommends approval of the request. If the plan is approved, staff requests that the following condition of approval be included: The parking lot shall be paved per Title 1908 standards. Thank you.
Okay, so thank you. I just want to make sure I heard this correctly. Whereas the previous recommendation from staff on item 45 was denial because 44 was withdrawn without prejudice, and as long as they agree to the condition of paving, staff recommends approval.
That is correct, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Aaron Chepnek, 845 Trotter Circle, 89107. I'm the applicant, if you have any questions.
Okay. I'm going to open this for public comment. Is anyone here to be heard either for or against this project? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment. Commissioner Slottman?
Yes, Commissioner Moody, the only issue I had with this project was unpaid parking, and I don't think the Department of Air Quality would even allow you to do that. So seeing that you're going to be paving the parking lot, I support your project.
Commissioner Creers, you ready for a motion?
I am. I am also in support now that the parking lot is going to be paved. That was a major issue. Still don't know why people don't like to do landscaping, but I visit this property often, going to the gym and to the Malaski Building. So I wish you the best of luck.
Thank you.
And so we're going to take a gen item 45, SDR 67419, and I recommend approval with conditions.
Okay. Please vote. Let me just make sure the applicant does agree to pave the...
Yes, correct.
The property.
I agree to pave.
Or the parking lot, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Okay. Please vote. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, this item is final action unless appealed to the City Clerk's office within 10 days.
Item 46, VAR 66897, the applicant owner is Erica Costa. For possible action on a request for a variance to allow a five-foot side and rear yard setback where 10 feet is required for a proposed accessory structure, a Class II casita at 7055 Delray Avenue in Ward 1. Staff recommends denial. Staff report?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. No evidence of a unique or extraordinary circumstance has been presented, as the applicant has created self-imposed hardship by proposing expansion of an existing nonconforming accessory structure into the required side setback. Staff recommends denial of the request. Please note that additional letters of support and protest have been received after the publication. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good afternoon, Chairperson. Larry Sanchez, civil engineer, 7844 Soaring Brook Street, representing the client tonight. The current residential homeowner would like to ask for a five-foot setback on the rear and on the side. They're putting in a guest house, if you will, for family, comes in and out of town. And currently, right now, there is a pool area with palm trees, and it's kind of a little berm, if you will, in between the current location of the casita. Putting it at 10 feet would kind of bump into that berm with a pool area, waterfall area. Moving it over to the right, if you will, or to the east, it would be going into the playground or the...
If you could lean back just a little bit, we can see what you've got in front of you. There you go.
So this is the current location of the, excuse me, of the pool area, and then there's a sandbox area for their kids. And so the applicant was assured that if this doesn't exceed the height requirements, that it wouldn't stick out as an eyesore to the resident to the side and to the rear. There is a current, there's a current CMU block wall that wraps around that rear corner of the property. It's about five, I think it's about a six-foot-high block wall. So again, going in 10 from the rear and 10 from the side would kind of push it into the existing sandbox and pool, palm tree, waterfall area. And so asking Commission tonight if we can keep it up. And so, asking Commissioner tonight if we can keep it at five. Checked with the fire department, building safety, that doesn't have any hindrance as far as fire resistance and protection of that nature.
Thank you. Item forty-six has been noticed for a public hearing. Anyone wish, wishing to speak on this item, please come forward and state your name and address. Seeing none, I'll close the public comment.
Thank you.
Commissioner Quinn?
Yeah, I drove by your, your client's project and, first of all, the neighbors on either side and behind are not complaining about it. I, I spoke to one on the, I believe, the east side and then drove around the back. And the other reason I'm compelling to approve this is because the fence, you pretty much don't see anything from the front. And therefore, when you drive around the block, you're not going to really see anything from the back. So, casitas are all the thing in that area. I mean, we, every other house seems to have one. So, with that, I, I think the five feet is fair enough and that'll be it. My motion this evening will be to staff, I'll follow all staff's conditions, but my motion will be for approval on item number variance six-six-eight-nine-seven.
Thank you, Commissioner Quinn. Please vote. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, this item will be heard at the City Council on January eighteenth, twenty-seventeen.
Item forty-seven, VAR six-six-nine-six-four. The applicant owner is Wetton Trust. For possible action on a request for variance to allow a five-foot side yard setback where ten feet is required for a proposed expansion of an existing accessory structure, a Class-two garage at eighteen-thirty, Terravista Way in Ward one. Staff recommends denial. Staff report?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. No evidence of a unique or extraordinary circumstance has been presented as the applicant has created self-imposed hardship by proposing an expansion of an existing nonconforming accessory structure into the required side setback. Staff recommends denial of the request. Please note that additional letters of support and protest have been received after the publication. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Evening.
Gary Carlson, Architect, sixty-four forty Bristol Way, eight-nine-one-oh-seven. Commissioners, we're here tonight just to go over this request for Mr. Wetton to add to his garage. He's lived at this residence for thirty years, been a good neighbor, and his property is well-developed, a lot of mature trees. The property backs itself along Oki and he has an onsite satellite garage, three-car openings facing the cul-de-sac. Mr. Wetton has been here a long time and he has one bad habit, and that's collecting classic cars. And this garage has been designed so that it doesn't detract from his residence. We haven't added any doors to the front of the garage, but have a clear story that he will neatly be able to put cars stacked in the facility. The garage currently has a five-foot setback as it was built in eighty-six on the west side. On the Oki side, there was sufficient room to expand the garage. We were unaware that the rules for the setbacks changed to ten feet some years ago when five feet has been common for accessory structures. There's five other properties from Red Rainbow up to this property that have satellite structures within five feet of the Oki fence line. So, we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. We'll open this for a public comment. Is anyone wish to be heard on item forty-seven? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment.
Moving right along, I love this house. I, I remember driving by and thinking--
I do, too.
And I used to think, wow, I like wonder really who lives there. And now, I know it's you and it's just beautiful.
Now you're disappointed.
When I drive through that area, that old area, everybody has added on garages or casitas and, and I'm sure with the, the beauty of your home, you're going to match it exactly, the brick, and it'll all be lined up. I just would love to be invited in someday. But anyway, with that, I'm going to make the motion this evening for approval on your item, which is variance six-six-eight-nine, no, yeah, six-six-eight-nine-seven.
Six-six-nine-six-four.
Six-six-nine-six-four. And wish you a lot of good, happy days there, sir. Thank you.
Please vote. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, this item will be heard at City Council on January eighteenth, twenty-seventeen.
Thank you.
Item forty-eight, VAR six-seven-four-two-zero. The applicant owner is Emilio Soto Velasquez. For possible action on a request for a variance to allow a two-foot side yard setback where ten feet is required for two existing accessory structures, Class-two shed and garage, and to allow a five-foot distance separation between an accessory structure, Class-two garage, and primary dwelling where six feet is required at thirty-seven-twenty-five Glen Ridge Way in Ward five. Staff recommends denial. Can we please hear from staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. No evidence of a unique or extraordinary circumstance has been presented as the applicant has created self-imposed hardship by locating two existing structures within the side set, side guard setback and one structure within the minimum separation distance from a primary structure. This item is the result of a code enforcement action and staff recommends denial of the request. Please note that additional letters of support and protest have been received after publication. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Arlene Valencia, nine-four-five-seven Diamond Bridge Avenue. I just helped him out with the application. The reason for the setbacks is that there's no room to place it somewhere else and he needs an extra storage for his tools. He will explain a little further on that?
Hi, my name is Emilio Soto. I live at thirty-seven-twenty-five Glen Ridge Way. The reason I need the storage is I got my tools and I don't want to put everything in the garage because I got my three kids and most of the time, they need more space to play. They were out to play in the garage and so, my tools go in a, in a little storage shed. And my other garage, I want our garage for, for RB. So, you know, like, we cover the roof so that it's longer lasted. So, that's the reason. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. I'll open this for public comment. Is anyone here to speak on this item? Please come to the microphone and state your name and address. Hi.
Hi, how are you? It's Mayor McIntyre, thirty-seven thirty-three Glen Ridge Way. I am Mr. Soto's neighbor to the left and I don't see a problem with this structure. I think it would add actual something, something to our backyards with it there. So, I think it would be a good idea to have it there.
So, when you say to the left, are you on the side of this proposed building?
Yes.
Okay.
My bedroom's right next to it.
All right. Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment. Is there any discussion on the Planning Commission? Commissioner Creer? I'll entertain a motion.
To item forty-eight, VAR six-seven-four-two-zero, I move for approval.
Please vote. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, this item is final action unless appealed to the City Clerk's office within ten days.
Item forty-nine, VAR six-seven-four-five-one. The applicant owner is John Lee and Darrell Family Trust. For possible action on a request for variance to allow a five-foot rear yard setback where ten feet is required and a five-foot distance separation from the principal dwelling where six feet is required for a proposed accessory structure, Class-two, detached patio cover at fifty-eight fifty-four Delray Avenue in Ward one. Staff recommends denial. Staff?
Mr. Chairman, the applicant is requesting a variance to allow proposed detached patio cover that does not meet the minimum rear yard setback and minimum distance separation requirement from the principal dwelling. The structure could be redesigned to meet the requirements of Title nineteen point zero-six. There's no evidence of a unique or extraordinary circumstance has been presented to substantiate the request. Staff is recommending denial as hardship is self-imposed. But please note that there is an additional letter of support since publication.
Thank you. Hello.
Hello, Commissioners. My name is John Lee. I live at fifty-eight fifty-four Delray. We've owned the property since nineteen eighty-eight and then moved in the home in nineteen ninety-four and we've added on several times. We also did add an existing garage when the setback was five feet at that time and it's currently there. And all we're asking for is a covered patio that matches up with the five-foot setback as opposed to the ten-foot setback that's changed. It's this portion right here, which is the patio cover, and it's also asking for a variance for five feet from the existing house structure and that is in conformity with the current walkways that currently exist on the property. The patio cover is the same height as the sports court. The sports court is currently at a zero-lot line setback and we'll abide by the five-foot setback if possible. Our lives have changed. We're empty nesters, but now, all we have is grandchildren. So, the grandchildren are all on the closer side of the patio, I'm sorry, of the pool, the year, the place where they need coverage. So, we're requesting that we be granted the variances for that patio cover. It's an all-metal structure. We don't see any fire hazards, any questions whatsoever regarding that.
Thank you. Item forty-nine has been noticed for public hearing. Is anyone wish to be heard? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment. Any discussion on the commission?
Thank you. Does anybody else have a discussion? Because I, I think what we're seeing tonight is the repetition of when the law was the five-foot setback for these older, beautiful homes and now, it's to no fault of your own that they're changing to the ten-feet setback. But, and because of that, I'm going to make the motion this evening for approval of variance six-four-seven-five-one, following staff's conditions, just because you've been there a long time and it just follows what's there. So, thank you, Mr. Lee.
Thank you.
Please vote. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, item forty-nine is final action unless appealed to the City Clerk's office within ten days.
Item fifty is WVR six-seven-three-seven-zero. The applicant owner is Pre-Rancho Jones LLC. For possible action on a request for a waiver to allow no streetlights along Leon Avenue at the northwest corner of Alexander Road and Leon Avenue in Ward five. Staff recommends denial. Staff report?
Mr. Chairman, city staff requires the full installation of complete streets throughout the city. Staff does not support the, the supposed, proposed request and recommends denial. Please note that additional letters of protest and support have been received after the publication. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Planning Commissioners, my name is Tony Celesta, address nineteen eighty Festival Plaza Drive, here on behalf of the applicant. This board may remember this item back in September. My colleague, Jennifer Lazovich, initially handled the underlying entitlements for the Founder's Legacy School. The property is generally located on Rancho, Alexander, and then Leon. The school itself, as you can see from the site plan, is really on the back seven acres on the corner of Leon and Alexander. This board did recommend approval. We went to City Council in October of this year. There was discussion on whether or not there was going to be streetlights on Leon. During that conversation at the City Council, it was the direction of Councilman Barlow to actually waive the requirement for streetlights along Leon. But because the application was not noticed for the waiver of streetlights, we were directed by the, the Councilman to come back with this waiver application. In fact, I have the summary of the minutes from that October fifth meeting where you can see some dialogue between the Councilman, Mr. Perrigo, and Mr. Scott with respect to us having to come back to, to formally make that request with respect to waiving the streetlights along Leon. And that was predominantly driven by Councilman Barlow and the outreach from the neighbors making that request. So, we are here following through on that request. We agree with all the conditions of the if approved and I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
All right, this has been noticed for a public hearing. Is anyone wish to be heard on item fifty? So, please come to the microphone, state your name and address.
Thank you. Councilman, Commissioner Moody, Commissioners Lax, Anderson, three-seven-zero-nine, Water Hall Street. I'm the historian for our Neighborhood Association. I'm the only presenter. Can I have two minutes? I will go over two minutes.
You have two minutes.
Thank you, sir. In regard to a street lighting on Leon, I think planning staff made the right decision in denying the application not to have streetlights on Leon. If you understand Title nineteen, and in fact, is the bible for special use permits, planning staff really had no choice. Title nineteen does not differentiate between public schools and private schools or charter schools in this regard. A school is a school. It seems to boil down for the Planning Commission to help staff make sense out of what Title nineteen doesn't account for. However, Title nineteen does address rural preservation and based on Las Vegas City Code and the Rural Preservation Overlay Guidelines, there is no justification for streetlights on Leon. Originally, the community and the neighbors were totally against streetlights in support of rural preservation. Founder's knows this and asked NAR to do a survey of the immediate neighbors, which would most likely endorse Founder's for not having to pay the additional cost of adding streetlights to the Leon buffer. To our surprise, because of the change in the character of the neighborhood where the school there, half the residents now wanted streetlights based on the historic concerns of this type of landscaping buffering, what it brings out, what, what, what it brings out and it's not based on pedestrian traffic. Founder's is also aware of these security concerns in a letter to Mr. Moreno on November fourteenth. It seems reasonable to ask the Planning Commission to specifically address the issue in light of its Title nineteen rural preservation overlay criteria since Title nineteen does not specifically address charter schools and the unique characteristics that would impact the neighborhoods. That's what city codes and ordinances are for. The City Council has elected to postpone sidewalks until a sixty-day evaluation after the school starts. It seems logical to do the same thing with the streetlights. Foot traffic is not an issue. Founder's, Mayor Goodman, and our Councilman has virtually guaranteed that the school internal drop-off and pickup system will eliminate any student impact on Leon or Alexander. Additionally, Founder's advised us only three out of their present five-hundred-and-fifty-student population that come to school live in the thirteenth-street area west of Bradley that might use Leon to get to school. Again, foot traffic is not an issue. Let Founder's build a school and then we can see how it goes from there in regards to the legitimacy for street lighting. That makes sense. Maybe make a review in a year or so and make it a win-win for everybody. If they don't need to build it, they don't need to build it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard on this? Give the applicant a very short response, if any?
No, I appreciate the favorable comments overall. I just would note that there is a condition that we do have to provide stubbing for the lights and we're agreeing to that.
Okay. And if, if the condition were requested to have a review of three months, six months, one year and it was determined that the school needed streetlights, you'd agree to that condition?
If there's a required review, we'd, we'd come back for that review.
Okay. All right, I'll close the public comment. I'll open this for discussion. Commissioner Creer, your light's on?
It is. Mr. Chair, thank you. I see no issue with this and I'm going to be in support of it.
Commissioner Slotman?
Yes, I'll just go ahead and put my comments on the, on the record. When this come before us at Planning Commission, we had sidewalks in on Leon. City Council took that out and now, we have no sidewalks and no streetlights. I think that's irresponsible and I don't think we're very good planners and that we're providing a school what it really needs if we're not providing the least, you know, the sidewalk. And I know that's not what we're here about today, but now, we're asking for a waiver for a streetlight. So, you're not going to see my support on this and I think it's very irresponsible. Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner Slotman. I happen to agree with you on the sidewalks, but as you say, that's not in front of us. So, I'll entertain a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Item fifty, WVR six-seven-three-seven-zero, I move for approval.
Thank you. Please vote. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, this item will be heard at City Council on January eighteenth, twenty-seventeen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, have good evening.
Take care. Items fifty-one and fifty-two are related. Item fifty-one is SUP six-seven-one-three-six. The applicant is Avrio Properties, Inc. and the owner is Eight Twenty-Four South Decatur LLC. For possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed hotel residence at Eight Twenty-Four South Decatur Boulevard in Ward one, staff recommends approval. Item fifty-two is SDR six-seven-one-three-seven. For possible action on a request for a site development plan review for a proposed four-story, one-hundred-and-forty-unit hotel residence use with a waiver of perimeter landscape requirements-- requirements on a portion of the north and south property lines in Ward One, staff recommends approval. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, despite the requested waiver and exception, the proposed development is appropriate for the general commercial zone in the Las Vegas redevelopment area. The adjacent uses will not be adversely affected by the proposed hotel residence, and the site is adequately buffered from multifamily residential development to the west and the house of worship to the south. The proposed landscaping will enhance the Decatur Boulevard's street frontage, and measure have been taken to ensure that the building is aesthetically compatible with development in the area. Therefore, staff recommends approval of the special use permit, site development, plan review, and associated waivers. Please note additional letters of protest and support have been received after the publication. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, planning commissioners. My name is Michael Durbus. I am from four-two-nine-zero, Las Vegas Studio Court in Las Vegas. I am here to represent the project. This will be a four-story building with a beautiful deck in front of the building to add comfort and to add amenities to the residence at, at the Decatur residence, basically to give a swimming pool, a gym, a little comfort area for watching TV or what have you, so anybody who wants to host any guest on the deck that's in front of the structure instead of sitting in their unit, and for anybody who would like to basically enjoy the spa or the swimming pool. We expect to build a beautiful project that will enhance the neighborhood and will be compatible with other nice structures in the area north of Charleston, immediately on the west side of Decatur.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Items fifty-one and fifty-two have been noticed for public hearing. Does anyone here to speak on either of these items? Please come forward and state your name and address.
Hello. My name is David Verbenic. I live at forty-six-hundred Baxter Place. I'm approximately one block east of this area, and I'm opposed to this. I think this is too dense, one-hundred-and-forty units on less than two acres of property, and the traffic on Decatur is too heavy as it is right now. There's too many people walking around there that don't have any business, and they've got the high crime on the Walmart just on Charleston. That was like on the top five police calls they had on the news just last week. And myself, I'm opposed to this. I don't want, I don't think we need a residential hotel on Decatur. The traffic's heavy there. It's right next to Arizona's Charlie's, and I've lived there since eighty-three. And it's the last, you know, five, ten years, it's just gradually gone downhill. They put the new park project and the entrance at Essex, Essex Circle and right off of Charleston, they did all the remodeling there with the roads and the, the curbs and the sidewalks. And this would just be counterproductive to have, you know, to, after putting in the park, to build a, a hotel like this there. I mean, I don't see that's going to improve the neighborhood at all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to be heard? I'll give the applicant a quick response.
Appreciate it. The property has been owned by the same owner for a couple of decades. The business currently, there is a used car lot that's operating there and generally speaking, has been operating in an excellent condition. My office was on the same lot for several years, and it had been operated in an exemplary manner. We've built other very nice structures in Clark County, and overall, commissioners and the community have really enjoyed what had been built. And I truly believe that in any business, in any structure that gets built or an organization being operated, a lot of what happens there is really dependent on the people who are running that business. Management has a lot to do with it. The owners and their moral risk and how they operate their business has a lot to do with it. We consider that we operate business in a very responsible manner in the community, and we intend to do, if anything, better than before, not anything less. We're very proud of what we do, and I, as an owner, would make the extra effort to ensure that this will be an exemplary project, and I seek approval, and I would appreciate the consideration.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
The public comment is now closed, and I'll see if there's any discussion. Commissioner Quinn?
Hi there, Mr. David. And let me ask you a few things about your project. Is this going to be a, a day, monthly, weekly hotel, or is it just going to be like, you know, you come in and you stay a couple of days like a hotel? Or are you going to do more long-term renting versus just a few days at a time?
Thank you for, for the question.
The truth.
What it is, it's been, over the last couple of years, in the research done, we understood that in the, in the corridor of Charleston between Highway fifteen and Decatur and there about, the medical businesses and the various clinics plus the hospital that are in the area, it's been basically with the research done, we understood that there is a demand for a quieter, cleaner, and responsive to the needs of people who are in town on medical, for medical purposes. So in a way, the primary marketing would be for people who need a kitchenette, need an area that is not, non-smoking facility, and that is non-gaming facility, and that they are here either because they have got, they have an incident of grief or somebody is injured, and the place will be catering more or less to that clientele.
And your property will be built from the ground up, correct?
Absolutely.
And you say there'll be a hundred-and-forty units?
A hundred-and-forty.
And a space for every unit?
Absolutely. The units are not big in size. They are between four-hundred and eight-hundred square feet. The third floor will have approximately twenty-five-hundred to three-thousand square feet of space for a little area for basically meeting family members or what have you. As I mentioned earlier, a little gym, little swimming pool and the spa. And basically, we look forward to operating a very tight ship when it comes to ensuring that it's safe, that it's secure.
Yes.
And that we really, really, very much care about the neighbors. And I do appreciate the, the point raised by our dear neighbor to the east, but truly, if anything, I will say, we will enhance the area, not anything less, and we've been complimented.
One more question. On your bottom floor, will there be any units available for a disabled traveler in a wheelchair?
Absolutely, and there will be, there will be units available for disabled people, and we do have also an elevator to give access to people to all levels.
Great.
And all the wide hallways are there, because specifically, we're catering to people who are on medical stay or medical need.
Okay. Well, then, I appreciate all your answers. If there's no other questions from my fellow commissioners, I'm ready to make a motion.
Thank you. Please do.
Thank you. We're on item number fifty-one, or fifty-one, yeah, fifty-one. It's the waiver six-three-seven-zero. My motion is for, oh, I'm sorry. We're at fifty-one. I'm sorry, SUP six-seven-one-three-six. It's a special use permit, and my motion is for approval on that item. I just wanted to say one more thing. I'd like to add a one-year review from the day the permit is pulled, pulled open. The, the business, please. Is that okay with you? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, you're asking for a one-year review from the date that a building permit is pulled?
Well, I, from the day they open.
Okay.
So what would that be?
That would be a business license.
Perfect.
Because it'd probably take them more than a year to build.
That's exactly what I was going to say, Trent.
Okay. Sorry.
Thanks. So that's, that's my motion with that review, okay?
Sure. Absolutely.
So I can just clarify, the condition would read in it, is this an administrative review?
It's, yes.
Administrative review shall be conducted one year from the issuance of a business license.
Yes.
Thank you. Please vote. Motion carries.
Thank you. And then moving on to item number fifty-two, which is the SDR six-seven-one-three-seven, my motion is also for approval following all of staff's recommendations. Is that okay with you?
I apologize, Edin Tyret.
Oh, it was your other item, sir, number fifty-two?
Yes.
SDR six-seven-one-three-seven. My motion is for approval following all of staff's recommendations that are in your backup.
Absolutely.
Please vote. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, items fifty-one and fifty-two will be heard at city council on January eighteenth, twenty-seventeen.
Thank you very much.
Items fifty-three through fifty-five are related. Item fifty-three is SUP six-seven-four-six-four. The applicant is Golden Gate Casino, LLC. The owner is Sal Sagiv Hotels Company, Inc. For possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed one-thousand-seventy-three square foot expansion to an existing non-conforming gaming establishment, non-restricted use at one Fremont Street in Ward Three, staff recommends approval. Item fifty-four is SUP six-seven-four-six-five for possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed one-thousand-one-hundred-sixty-eight square foot expansion to an existing non-conforming gaming establishment, non-restricted use at fifteen Fremont Street in Ward Three. Staff recommends approval. And item fifty-five, SDR six-seven-four-six-six, for possible action on a request for a site development plan review for a five-thousand-two-hundred square foot expansion of an existing hotel casino at one and fifteen Fremont Street in Ward Three. Staff recommends approval. Commissioner Slottman?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have ongoing business relationship with Mr. Kessler, so therefore will be abstaining on this matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Staff report?
Mr. Chairman, this request is to merge, merge an existing hotel and casino within an adjacent casino and expand the gaming area of each establishment located at one and fifteen Fremont Street. Staff finds the proposed hotel expansion is compatible with adjacent development and development in the area, and is recommending approval of all applications. Please note that an additional letter of support has been received after the publication. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, Chairman Moody. Commissioners Todd Kessler, two-sixty-one Las Vegas Boulevard North, here on behalf of the applicant. Given the hour, I would just ask that you support it, and subject to conditions, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Items fifty-three through fifty-five have been noticed for public hearing. Does anyone here to speak on any of these items? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment. See if there's any discussion. Commissioner Flingus?
I'm prepared to make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Please do.
Item number fifty-three, which is SUP six-seven-four-six-four, move to approve, subject to conditions.
Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, item fifty-four, SUP six-seven-four-six-five, move to approve, subject to conditions.
Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, final related item fifty-five, SDR six-seven-four-six-six, move to approve, subject to conditions.
Thank you. Please vote. Motion also carries, noting the abstention on all three items of the vice chair.
Mr. Chairman, items fifty-three, fifty-four, and fifty-five are final action unless appealed to the city clerk's office within ten days.
Thank you. Happy holidays to you guys.
You too. Item fifty-six, items fifty-six and fifty-seven are related. Item fifty-six is SUP six-seven-zero-three-nine. The applicant owner is forty-four-sixty-one Decatur, LLC. For possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed auto repair garage minor at forty-four-sixty-one North Decatur Boulevard, suites one-ten and one-twenty in Ward Four, staff recommends denial. Item fifty-seven, SDR six-seven-seven-zero-five, for possible action on a request for a major amendment to a previously approved site development plan review, SDR four-eight-eight-two, to allow a four-thousand-one-hundred-forty-four square foot auto repair garage minor with a waiver to allow service bays facing a public right-of-way in Ward Four. Staff recommends denial. Would please have staff's report.
Mr. Chairman, the applicant has requested a major amendment to an approved site development plan review and special use permit to allow an auto repair garage minor to be located within two suites of an existing building. The building is located in a shopping center development along the Decatur Boulevard, the Decatur Boulevard frontage. As the location of the bay doors for the facility will be facing the street, a waiver is required. Staff does not support the request and is recommending denial. Please note that there are additional letters of protest since publication.
Thank you.
Dennis Rusk, five-two-two East Twain, it's late, Las Vegas, Nevada, eight-nine-one-six-nine. The minor auto repair will be all done within the building, all completely enclosed. We held a neighborhood meeting. It was properly noticed, and we only had one individual showed up, and I believe it was the assistant to the councilman, Anthony. We met with Councilman Anthony before we made this application. The doors, the overhead door, as you can see, is going to look exactly like the rest of the storefront. There won't be any change. It'll primarily be closed because the work, it will be all done inside, where it'll be both heated and air-conditioned, so they'll be having the door primarily closed most of the time. And it doesn't change the appearance. Now, the vehicles primarily will be coming in, in between the back of the existing Albertson Supermarket, in the alleyway, in this new overhead door that faces the garbage bin. We have an extent, a very intense buffer of landscaping between us and the, and the residents to our north, and I believe the only real objection was the fact that we have this overhead door that's going to be facing the street. And what we're going to be facing is a mighty key open service bays across the street, which is across Decatur. So would please ask for your approval, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. I'll open these items for public comment. Does anyone wish to be heard? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment.
Mr. Chairman, before you go on, I'm going to need to have to abstain on this matter. I'm on the executive board for Goodwill Industries, which is right next door to this, this project.
Commissioner Trowbridge?
If there's any other comments, I'm ready to make the motion on this request, though.
Thank you.
In regards to the special use permit, sixty-seven oh-three-nine, make a recommendation for approval, subject to all staff conditions.
Thank you. Motion carries.
In regards to item fifty-seven, site development review, sixty-seven seven oh-five, make a recommendation for approval, subject to all staff conditions.
Thank you. That motion also carries with Commissioner Flingus abstaining on both items.
Mr. Chairman, items fifty-six and fifty-seven are final action unless appealed to the city clerk's office within ten days.
Item fifty-eight, SUP-
Thank you very much, and Merry Christmas.
Thank you. To you as well. Fifty-eight, SUP six-seven-two-nine-two. The applicant is Shaw and Associates, PLC. The owner is Farm Road Retail, LLC. For possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed seventy-six-foot tall wireless communication facility, stealth design, monopalm, with a waiver to allow a two-hundred-and-forty-nine-foot distance separation from a single-family detached dwelling, where three-hundred-and-thirty feet is the minimum separation required, at eighty-four-fourteen Farm Road in Ward Six. Staff recommends denial. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Proposed seventy-six-foot tall stealth-designed wireless communication facility will be designed as a palm tree in order to blend in with the subject site. The proposed wireless communication facility will be approximately two-hundred-and-forty-nine feet from the nearest single-family detached dwelling, where three-hundred-and-thirty feet is the minimum required. As the location of the cell tower does not meet minimum town center distance separation requirements, staff recommends denial of the request. Please note that additional letters of protest were received after the publication. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Thank you, Chair and Commissioners. My name's Jason Sangston with Shaw and Associates, one-two-two West Cave Dale Drive in Phoenix, Arizona. We, we've been working for quite some time to try to locate a facility to expand our network coverage in this area. It's a pretty large commercials area, has a lot of drawers, thousands of customers drawing on the network. As well, if you note, you'll see where the location is just behind, it's not actually behind Albertson's, but it's kind of just north of it in that niche of the employee parking area in the back. parking area in the back, so it's kind of shifted just behind the headline retail. But there's a large expanse of residential development that's built out all the way to the east and the north, that doesn't offer an opportunity for us to locate a wireless communication facility there. Hence, it's as close as we can get to it while trying to have it behind the building. The landowner for the commercial site wasn't interested in having the relatively large equipment enclosure in the parking lot in the front of the store. So that's why we're here today. We had a neighborhood meeting, six hundred notices went out, we only had one person show up, and they were in support. And then I did see, in the public record, I saw the protest. That resident that is in the staff report lives seven hundred feet away to the southeast.
Okay. Thank you. Item fifty-eight has been noticed for public hearing. Is anyone here to be heard on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment, and will tell you that I'm not always in favor of the palm for the stealth, but I think under these circumstances, that probably has the least visual impact, both on the commercial area as well as the neighbors. I think that looks good, so you'll see my support on this. And I do appreciate you holding the neighborhood meeting and trying to reach out to them.
Thank you, Chair.
Commissioner Trowbridge?
If there's no other questions, I'm ready to make a motion.
Yes, thank you.
In regards to item number fifty-eight, special use permit, sixty-seven two-nine-two, I'd make a recommendation for approval, subject to all staff conditions.
Thank you, please vote. Motion carries. Fifty-eight.
Mr. Chairman, this item is final action unless appealed to the City Clerk's office within ten days.
Item fifty-nine, SUP six-seven-four-four-seven, the applicant is Verizon Wireless at Al. The owner is Rock Springs Retail Investors LLC. For possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed eighty-foot tall wireless communication facility, stealth-designed clock tower, at the southwest corner of Lake Mead Boulevard and Rock Springs Drive in Ward One. Staff recommends denial. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The proposed eighty-foot tall stealth wireless communication facility will be designed to appear as a clock tower in order to blend in with the subject site. The proposed facility was previously submitted for administrative conditional use verification review, and was denied for being incompatible with the surrounding area and land uses. A special use permit was subsequently required. The proposed clock tower structure will adequately screen the wireless antennas, however, rather than being located at less obtrusive location, the facility is proposed at a highly visible location near the intersection of Lake Mead and Rock Springs Drive. Four parking spaces will be lost with this installation, although the overall site will meet Title Nineteen requirements. While the site will maintain adequate parking levels per code requirements, there are many onsite uses such as restaurants that are parking-intensive and have a high demand during peak times. It is not recommended the current number of parking spaces be reduced. The use is determined not to be harmonious and compatible with the surrounding uses, and staff recommends denial of the request. Please note that an additional letter of protest was received after the publication. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello?
Hi, Nancy Smith, at two-five-two-three East La Costa Drive in Chandler, Arizona. In submitting this application, we did reach out to Councilwoman Tarkanian to get her feedback on what would be supported in this area. We originally submitted with a palm tree design. She said that that would not be supported because she did not feel that it really fit into that area, so she recommended the clock tower that we have proposed in this. Part of her reasoning is that we can get more people or more carriers in this tower without further effect on the neighborhood. It is primarily surrounded by the same zoning, C-one, all the way around it, and the main reason for this is for the, to not only give more service to that area, but also to offload the sites that are feeding that freeway because they are overloaded at this time. And as far as the location of it, the landlord actually requested that we go up there because those are the spaces that are rarely used in his lot. He finds even during the busiest of times, those are the ones that are usually empty. So that, and with RF's request to be as close to the freeway as possible, that is the reasoning for its location.
Thank you. Item fifty-nine is open for public comment. Is anyone wish to be heard? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment. Commissioner Quinn?
Thank you for following through and building that into the clock tower. It'll look really nice. With that, I'm going to make the motion this evening for approval on SUP six-seven-four-four-seven, following staff's conditions.
Thank you. Motion is to approve item fifty-nine, please vote. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, item fifty-nine will be heard at the City Council on January eighteenth, two thousand and seventeen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item sixty, SUP six-seven-four-seven-four, the applicant owner is the Sylvia Brun Family Trust. For possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed bed and breakfast in use with a waiver to allow one guest room, where two is the minimum required, at twenty-five oh-eight Kalita Court in Ward One. Staff recommends denial. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, the applicant is requesting a special use permit for bed and breakfast in a single-family residence. A minimum of two guest rooms are required for the use, however, parking on the site is limited and supports only one guest room, so a waiver is required, which staff does not support. The use will be located within a residential subdivision within six hundred and sixty feet of two approved short-term residential rental uses. While there is no requirement for distance separation for the bed and breakfast use, the short-term residential rental use is very similar and does require separation from other rental uses. The establishment of this commercial use of a single-family residence at the proposed location is too intense for the surrounding residential uses, therefore, staff recommends denial. Please note that there are additional letters of protest and support since publication.
Thank you, good evening.
Yes, good evening, Commissioners. My name is Sylvia Brun. I am a forty-seven-year resident of Las Vegas, and I have resided at twenty-five zero-eight Kalita Court for over twenty years, and I applied for a special use permit for our residential bed and breakfast. I had to kind of say yes to this waiver because I do have two bedrooms, but I would have to extend my driveway to hold four cars in a row, and I just spent a small fortune on taking my grass out and replacing it with rocks, so I kind of tried to do a catch-twenty-two on that one, but I do have the two bedrooms available, but the parking was the issue then. I have also, I have eight signatures of support from my immediate neighbors, whom I have given the same letter that I submitted to the city of Las Vegas. And three of these individuals have been, were here about a month ago to oppose a short-term rental in our area, and they are in support of what I'm doing because they know what I do and they trust me, and I have hosted people in my house for years, and it would not change the way I live in any way because it's going to be the same thing.
Okay, thank you. Item sixty has been noticed for public hearing. If anyone wishes to be heard on this item, please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
My name's Ted Papa George, I'm with the, I'm at nineteen oh-one Kalina Court, so I'm here to oppose the, this bed and breakfast. I don't understand a whole lot about it, but if you look at the map, at least on the card, there's somebody catty-corner next door, and then I'm behind them, so I kind of got the short straw from the neighbors to come here and hang out at the meeting. You're right, there was a, there's two other short-term rentals or something like that. One of them's on my-
They were opposed, yes.
One of them's on my cul-de-sac, that was around the way, and we have, we're really pissed about that, and even when they follow the noise stuff, there's folks going in and out of the cul-de-sac all hours of day and night. I don't understand the difference between-
There's a big difference.
I'll give you an opportunity to-
I understand the difference between-
Respond in a few minutes.
Bed and breakfast, we don't want businesses in our neighborhood, so that's my feeling and my neighbors', and we don't like the short-term rentals either, but we're stuck with them, and there's various folks trying to do different things. So anyways, I'm here to represent some of our neighbors that do not want this.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Please come forward.
Hello, Christina Gibson, two-five-one-three Kalita Court. I'm directly across the street from Sylvia. Sylvia's a model neighbor, I've been in that house six and a half years. She's very close with everyone in the neighborhood as much as possible, very close with everyone in our cul-de-sac. She's talked to all of us, we all support her, she has signatures from everyone immediately in the cul-de-sac. I, too, is very against the short-term rentals, and I don't like them, and they do cause party houses in our neighborhood, and I'm very against them. This is completely different. She's a model neighbor, she takes care of things, she lets us know if there's someone in the neighborhood that shouldn't be, she keeps an eye out, she reminds us all to keep our lights on at night because it's safer. I have no concerns about this at all, I completely support it, I think it will improve our neighborhood, just the way she is and the way she lives her life. She plans on living in that house the rest of her life. I see absolutely no possibility this would ever be a party house. She will be there, her and her husband will manage and supervise anyone who is there. I can't imagine why anyone would oppose it if they really knew what it was about. I completely support it, and on behalf of all the neighbors in the immediate vicinity, we support it.
Thank you. Now I'll give you a chance to respond.
I do believe there's a big difference between a short-term rental and a bed and breakfast because the bed and breakfast is owner-occupied, which means I would be at the site all the time, and if you would know me better, you would know that I've entertained people from all over all my life, pro bono, you know? So I thought this may be something fun for me to do, and it would definitely not change anything that I'm doing now, it would be exactly the same.
Okay, thank you. I'll close the public comment.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And see if there's any discussion on the plan, Commissioner, starting with Commissioner Quinn.
Thank you. I drove, I know this area very well, I had a friend years ago that lived on this street, and unfortunately, I haven't heard this one before, I don't know if any of my Commissioners have, call a short-term rental now a bed and breakfast, and although she's, it's being called a bed and breakfast in the application, it was referred to over three times, and I counted, as a short-term rental. With that, I'm going to follow staff's recommendations this evening for the denial, and let it go to City Councils. My motion is for denial. Thank you.
Any other comments before we proceed? Okay, motion is made. Please vote. That motion carries, four to three. So the item sixty is denied.
Mr. Chairman, item sixty is final action unless appealed to the City Clerk's office within ten days.
Any questions about that?
Yeah, is there anything I can do about that?
You'll go forward to City Council, you'll have a chance to-
She'll have to appeal it, Chairman, to the-
Oh, I'm sorry, it is-
She'll have to write a letter just indicating you want to appeal this denial, and submit that to the City Clerk within ten days. Peter, if you could let her, Peter? If Planey could let her know those instructions, it'd be great.
Thank you for clarifying that, I didn't hear it was final action. Okay, moving on to item sixty-one, SUP six-seven-four-eight-nine, the applicant owner is Harrison Properties Limited. For possible action on a request for a special use permit to allow an automobile rental use at seven twenty-five South Las Vegas Boulevard, Suite two-sixty, in Ward Three. Staff recommends denial. Staff's report, please.
Mr. Chairman, the applicant's proposing to add automobile rentals at an existing retail and pawn shop location. The rental use would be conducted from a suite on-site with vehicle rentals, or rental vehicles occupying no more than five parking spaces. The existing site is located within the downtown Centennial Plan area, and all projects located within the Las Vegas downtown Centennial Plan area are not subject to the automatic application of parking requirements. The existing shared parking lot that will be utilized by the proposed rental use is severely parking impaired, with only thirty-three available parking spaces in addition to the five rental spaces. An equivalent commercial development outside of the downtown Centennial Plan area would be required to provide approximately one hundred seventy-five parking spaces. Adding this use to an already heavily congested site would not be harmonious or compatible with the surrounding adjacent uses, and staff is recommending denial. An area along Las Vegas Boulevard has been designated for vehicle display in addition to the five designated rental spaces, which is not permitted without the approval of a waiver. This area also serves as a required access aisle for a handicap parking space and cannot be utilized for display. So if approved, a condition should be added that states, "Display of vehicles for rent is permitted in the designated rental spaces only, as depicted in the site plan. No additional on-site display shall be allowed."
Thank you. Good evening.
Hi, good evening. Laura Drea, five-twenty South Ford Street. With me is Jeff Von Tobel with Golden Silver Pawn, and Andrew Zimmerman, who's the CFO of Harrison Properties. Pluris Industries hopes to rent a two-hundred-and-eighty-eight square foot unit within the Pawn Plaza Shopping Center, and up to five spaces in the adjoining Pawn Plaza parking lot, to lease their slingshot vehicle by the hour and by reservation. It's an unconventional vehicle, and the, an unconventional operation compared to, say, enterprise vehicles. Unconventional in that it's rented by the hour or the half-day. The main issue in the staff report is that a vehicle rental facility is less than twenty-five-thousand square feet in a C-two zone. However, we find that this is not a typical rental vehicle facility, and the twelve-hundred-eighty-eight square foot area is better scaled to the walkability of the Centennial Plan and this property on Las Vegas Boulevard. Mr. Gobek, he did talk a little bit about parking. Jeff Von Tobel is on the site every day, and he can talk about the parking on the specific parcel that this application entails, as well as the access to parking that Golden Silver Pawn has on private parcels around the shopping center. And also note that the city of Las Vegas owns several parking meters off-site, which will benefit from any overflow parking that is needed.
Jeffrey Von Tobel, sixty-eight seventy-nine Crystal Rapids, Las Vegas, Nevada, eight-nine-one-four-eight. So this is the main parcel, but Golden Silver Pawn Shop and Pawn Plaza, the customers can also park in this parking lot here, and available to the tenant to store the vehicles, and also have employee parkings are an additional parking lot here, which is employee parking for Golden Silver Pawn Shop, parking lot here for employee parking for the Pawn Plaza, and the tenant will also have access to two spaces across the street over here.
Okay. Item sixty-one is now open for public comment. Is anyone here to be heard on this item? Looks empty out there. I will close the public hearing and see if there's any discussion. It looks like there is. Commissioner Cherry?
Through the chair, if I may, I'd like to disclose I live within the notification area. I will be voting on the item because it won't be affecting me any greater or lesser way.
Thank you. Commissioner Slotman?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I've looked at this, and I don't think it's going to have a negative effect on the parking lot, and I drive by this parking lot quite often, and there's constantly spaces open, so I don't think displaying five of these little roadsters are going to be that big of a deal. So if there's no other comments, I'm ready to make-
I have a, I have a comment.
Okay, go ahead.
Commissioner Quinn?
Thank you. It seems, I just don't know how much more stuff you're going to put in that piece of land. I mean, I drive by there often as well. You have people crossing the street because of the pawn store, people coming in, you add it, restaurants, you add it, all this stuff, I mean, my goodness, how much stuff can you put on one piece of land? And people are, the parking lot across the street, people are cutting across the street all the time, jaywalking across the street, getting over to there, people standing in the median, taking pictures for the pawn store. It's like, I just really don't know how much more stuff you're going to put in there. You're going to take away two parking spots to display the cars, and you're going to have parking, take away a couple parking spots across the street and some other off-site. It just seems like you guys are just trying to put too much stuff there, I mean.
It is a shopping center, and there are, I would say, what, two more vacancies for retail spaces within that shopping center?
Okay.
Which was approved in two thousand and thirteen, and constructed in two thousand and thirteen, two thousand and fourteen.
Okay.
Well, I think the majority of the people, Mr. Chairman, the majority of the people that show up here, I think one of the reasons why there is excess parking is because most of them are tourists, and so, therefore, I don't think parking's going to be affected. So therefore, I'm- So therefore, I'm ready to make a motion on item number sixty-one, S U P six-seven four-eight-nine, move to approve, subject to staff's conditions.
Thank you, please vote.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, clarify, is that with the added condition as well? With the added condition written to the record by staff earlier today, tonight.
To which the applicant agrees. Correct?
Yes, and may I make one more request, that, Mr. Slotman, consider this be final action?
I don't make that determination. Okay, thank you.
All right, please vote.
Chair, oops, okay. Just to, before we cast a vote, for clarification, does the proposal include a restriction that no more than five of these vehicles be parked on the property? If not, that would be an amended-
That's a question for staff, are they limited to five of the slingshot vehicles?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, the use?
I'm reading on page one of the staff report that minimum special use requirements for this use include, one, period, no more than five rental vehicles shall be stored on the site at any time.
Correct, that is the minimum special use permit requirement, no more than five rental vehicles shall be stored on the site at any one time, so that's why we designate the five spots.
Great, all right, motion is made, please vote. Motion carries. Item sixty-one is approved.
Mr. Chairman, item sixty-one is final action unless appealed to the city clerk's office within ten days.
Okay, moving on to director's business, item sixty-two, D I R six-seven-three-seven-five, the applicant owner is the city of Las Vegas, for discussion and possible action on our request for the election of twenty-seventeen planning commission officers. Commissioner Quinn.
First of all, I don't want to take any time to labor on the fact that you've been a great, great chairman, and we've had the privilege to have you two years in a row, which I think is really a good thing, because after the first year, then the second year, you really know what you're doing, and I've learned a lot from you, I respect you, I love the way you go look out at everything from horse properties to other people's wards, and you just mean the world to me, and I want to thank you for a really great year and a great friendship that I think will last a long time.
That's very kind, Commissioner Quinn, and let me just say, it's been a pleasure, both to serve with all of you, you've made my job easy, but especially staff, we have a very capable and competent group of men and women who work really hard behind the scenes, who have helped prepare me and, you know, helped educate me about these items. And, you know, as I think back over the past couple of years, we've had a unique planning commission, we have gotten along well, we've handled some major items that have come through here, we haven't always agreed, but we've been professional, and we always managed to walk you out in a, in a good mood most of the time, so, thank you, very kind of you. And I want to thank especially my vice chair, Commissioner Slotman, not only has he stepped in on those occasions when I couldn't be here, but many of you may not know that he's attended most of the chair briefings, especially over the past year, and has been right there by my side, and has really made my job easier, so, thank you, Trinity, I appreciate it.
Thank you, with that, I'm ready to make a motion that Trinity, Slotman moves a seat over and becomes our chairman for the two thousand seventeen year, and I think you'll do a great job, Trinity, you're ready? And it's my pleasure to nominate you as the chairman for next year's, sir.
Thank you.
Do we need a vote?
Any other nominations for chair?
No, well, I don't have any, no one.
So you just want to nominate Trinity?
No, I just think it's his turn, I'm kind of like this turn person, you know? Do we do the next one right away?
No, let's go ahead and let's have a motion.
My motion is for Trinity to move over her seat and be the chair.
All right, motion is made, please vote. I lost. It's unanimous.
Yay. You know, and it's kind of funny, because I think sometimes we get new people on board, and, you know, you just kind of know the right guy that's gonna make a great, great difference, and is gonna do a super great job, and that's our colleague, our friend, Sam Cherry. I'd like to nominate Sam Cherry as the vice chairman, looking forward to him moving on to being the chairman one day, because I think it's your turn, I think it's your time, and I think you'll do a great job, Sam. So my nomination is for Sam Cherry for the vice chairman.
All right, any other nominations for vice chair? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion. Commissioner Quinn, you want to make that motion? Nomination's good enough? Okay. Sam Cherry is vice chair, please vote.
Thank you.
It's also unanimous, congratulations to both of you. And with that, it's my pleasure to hand over the last item on tonight's agenda to our new chairman, Chairman Slotman. All yours.
Thank you, Chairman. Item sixty-four, citizens' participation. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters within the jurisdiction of the planning commission. No subject may be acted upon by the planning commission unless that subject is on the agenda and scheduled for action. If you wish to be heard, come to the podium, give your name for the record, the mountain discussion on any single subject, as well as the mountain time on any single speaker's loud, may be limited. Seeing none, I'll turn this over to Plan Commission. Just one comment, I just wanted to make my comments about Chairman Moody over the past couple of years, he did an outstanding job, and learned a lot from you, and just seeing how you progressed over the past couple of years, and just pushed our meetings along. You did a fantastic job, and it was joy sitting right next to you for this past two years, so, anyways, looking forward to taking your seat, and hope to learn more from you, thank you.
All right, thanks, everybody, Merry Christmas, and happy holidays, can I adjourn the meeting? Meeting's adjourned.